Okay, boss.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 7th, 2016. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes.
President.
Counsel De Peña.
President.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel.
Counsel Abdu. Counsel Armonte.
President.
Counsel Desto Malvano.
President.
Counsel Nilo Alvarez Rodriguez. Counsel Vice President Laplante.
President.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please stand up and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to approve the following sets of minutes? April 19th, 2016, May 3rd, 2016, May 9th, 2016, and May 17th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Public participation. Mr. H. Mali. I'd like to remind everyone to please address the council as a whole, not any individual counselors. Name an address for the record, please.
H. Mali, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera has 514 days in the office. His term in office as the worst mayor in history of Lawrence. Mayor Rivera has failed departments such as water department. Commissioner Peña on the full salary, never there. Two women from the water department operate water department with the budget of $18 million. We demand Mayor Rivera support our police department and the senior officers. Honorable Chief Pete Patrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen. We demand Mayor Rivera support our DPW workers and their union. Our public school under leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh has become the best public school in the nation. We need support our teachers and their union and their firefighters. Mayor Rivera, as the most anti-union, when he was at large member, he was against all unions, including police union, DPWD union, and firefighters' union. The citizens that voted for Mayor Rivera are so disappointed that they are saying, no, they're not going to vote for Mayor Rivera run for any office. We need new mayor, new administration that fully support our police department and their union. Support our DPW and their union. We need a real election, a true mayor that really care about our citizen, not a puppet mayor such as Mayor Rivera. Let's on November 2017, take our city back. Thank you.
I just want to offer an objection to that last speaker. As you know, Counsel President, we're not doing any politicking here at this council level. We're not supposed to be doing any politicking here before the mic at the city council. So I just hope the next time that incident arrives that we can object to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Next person on the list is Francis Salak.
Hello, Lawrence City Council and friends. My name is Francis Salak. I live in the great city of Lawrence. Happy, 245 Broadway, room number seven. Happy birthday, Jamie, my daughter, my lovely daughter. I love you. You are 33 years old. God bless you. Thank you for bringing me the meatballs and spaghetti. And bringing my granddaughter to my room, and God bless you. Happy birthday. I know it was June 6th, but happy birthday. Now we're going to go into discrimination. There's a lot of discrimination in this city. Lenny Degnan, Mary Claire Kennedy, Patricia Darling, Marcos Davis, Mike Sullivan. Where's Willie Lantigo? Did he get elected mayor? Is it in the budget? No. Where's his picture? Where's his picture? It's not here. Discrimination, discrimination. I was one of six Anglos that put Willie in, and I know a lot of Spanish people too. We want his picture up there. Don't pass the budget till you put Willie Lantigo up there. He, he was a mayor, just like all these Marcos Davis who were only mayor six weeks. Six grummy weeks, but they can't put Willie Lantigo up there? That's discrimination. I'm telling you. Okay, so another discrimination is Larry Hester. He was the best player ever out of the Volk's School. He averaged 29.8 a game. He worked for inspectional services. He was the best player in the Volk. Nobody ever put him in the Hall of Fame. I'm like, Martin Luther King was here, he said, discrimination, discrimination, discrimination. You're going to correct it. I'm going to make sure. I'm going to go to his Hall of Fame dinner, and he's going to be there. He was the best player ever out of the Volk's School, okay? Now, Lawrence High School baseball, they won 4-2. Be there tomorrow at Lowell. They're playing Bill Ricker. This team is great, sophomores juniors and seniors. They are great. Be there, represent Lawrence, okay? We need more stands at the stadium. There's only like 100 stands there. They should be 2,000 stands so the people can see the game. They're good. You're going to have people sitting down. All right, now we need a homeless shelter. We need a homeless shelter in South Lawrence. The DPW cleans the homeless shelter. The DPW doesn't. Not some guy from Hable. The DPW doesn't. Forty-two people sleep underneath the bridge. They shouldn't be sleeping there. They should have a shelter in South Lawrence, but they all are full with 42 beds. So nobody freezes to death.
Mr. Salak.
One person freezes to death. I'm bad. I don't want it. I don't want one woman, one man to freeze to death.
Mr. Salak, your time is up.
Put that in the budget, the $1 million. Put that in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Salak. Have a wonderful day. Next person is Mr. Dick Russell. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Dick Russell. I still reside 34 Cross Street in the city. There's not really much to discuss this evening as all the fireworks will probably happen tomorrow evening. I will say this. I guess that seven out of nine when you are batting title in most sports leagues, but for council attendance, it's a strikeout. I hope you counselors have come up with a way to plug up your bad ears tomorrow night when the citizens get up to give their take on the FY 2017 budget. It takes a little while to escape your brain cavity if the ear is blocked up. Too often, when the public speaks their mind on the budget, it appears to be a case of in one ear and out the other. I might be very charitable in phrasing it in that manner, as it does sound a little better than it's a done deal. Next question. What is the line item for the time clock on the council wall? Okay, lastly, I have this one comment, and I mean this with all sincerity. As the days dwindle to a precious few, I take this time to wish you a fond to do. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person is Brenda Rossi.
Brenda Rossi, 127 Chester Street. This is Valilian, who's retiring at the end of the month. As you embark on the next chapter of your life, we want to thank you for all the help you have given the residents of Lawrence over the past years as secretary to the city council, from helping with agendas to putting my flyers in the council boxes. How you've managed to keep a straight face while the rest of us rolled our eyes will surely be missed. Again, enjoy retirement. We will miss you, but know there will always be a cheer for you at the unofficial city council table. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be submitting these names to the record.
Counsel President, can I take a point of personal privilege for two seconds?
Boss, they are personal...
Yeah, there kind of is a personal issue that I would like to address.
Is it personally directly to affect, is it personally affecting you?
Nope. It has nothing to do with any of the agenda items. It has something to do with something that was directed to one of the people who got up as one of our residents and spoke. I think that it's...
Points of personal privilege are if someone has directly impacted you.
Okay, so can I add my name to the agenda, so to the public participation, so that I can get up and speak?
Public participation is already done for today.
That's ridiculous, that you're not going to let me get up and speak when I can just add my name to the end of that public participation, and you can give me the two seconds that I would like to say, if I could, please, Mr. Counsel President.
Counsel Armonte, public participation, it's always, and has always been, taken from that podium at 7:00 PM.
That's fine. I will still have my point.
Right now, it's 7:20.
I think it's a little disrespectful that Mr. Armonte...
Counsel Armonte, you are out of order.
He gets up here all the time.
Counsel Armonte, Counsel Armonte, you are out of order.
Nobody has anything to say against it, right?
Can I please get a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess, I don't care. Do it.
Motion to recess have been made and properly second.
It's unfair.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Quite frankly, there's been tremendous leadership in our school system, and he doesn't want me to direct any kind of attention to him, so I'm going directly against his edicts. But I want to thank him for what we're about to see here is an amazing crop of students that have graduated from Lawrence High School. With his leadership, the staff that works with him, we're able to take these students who I'm sure had a lot of raw ability, talent, and drive, and have them go and become, to move on, move forward, and become to their next step in their academic life, and their next step in becoming adults and citizens, and you'll always be residents of the city of Lawrence. So I wanted you to be on my side as we go through this process, as these are students that you can take great pride in. So if you would stand right there, so I can get to them. The first thing I want to say is, these students are amazing. All of them are amazing. They're the tops in their classes at the high school, and I'll talk about each one of them briefly. But in a whole, it's tremendous that we're able to celebrate achievement, celebrate what people are able to accomplish, and often, too often, we get so caught up in negativity that it's really good on occasion to take a step back, take a deep breath, and just say, wow, we really do have some tremendous, tremendous young people in our city. We should take great pride. So let's start off with our first valedictorian, in no particular order, Emily Rojas. Would you please come up? Counselors, as you know, this is a resolution that we signed. I'm going to speak very briefly, but her list is tremendously long, about Emily Rojas, who graduated from the school of performing in fine arts, of course, at Lawrence High School. Her GPA was 4.296. She was involved in many athletics, including, is that true? That's not true. But I will tell you that she was involved in the Smith College Book Award in 2015. You were involved in school, in cross-country, outdoor track, and the wrestling teams. She got a number of scholarships from a variety of different locations, and what I think is very exciting is she's going to be attending Hamilton College this upcoming fall. So I want to congratulate you on behalf of the city council. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sorry about that, Armonte. You're up. Did I pronounce the name correctly? I did good. Thank you. A lot of pressure. Yamani has graduated as the valedictorian of the School of Health and Human Services at the high school. Her academic GPA was 4.69.
Wow.
She was very involved in a number of different academic settings. Let's see here. You were class president your freshman year. You worked in chemistry and physics, and then in the National Young Leaders Award through MIT's, is it called MIT's program? You have been awarded various scholarships, for example, the Stigowski Alumni Scholarship, the Philip L. Swan Scholarship. And you, Yamani, are going to be attending Stanford University in the fall. Congratulations. You said so many things the other day. Right here, right here, right here. Or, right here.
Do you want to say your words?
Okay. You're all not going to be special, are you? You're not going to be... You're going to say thank you or something. Okay, I know you are. Should I just go? Sure. I'd like to introduce her and ask Ms. Merlino to come forward, please. Ms. Merlino, would you please come forward? The reason why we're asking Ms. Merlino to come forward is she's the principal at the School of Math, Science, and Technology, which now is no secret that we're going to invite Josue Rivera Valdez to come forward, please. Can we get this straight? Your GPA is 4.25. Of course, you got the L pin like everyone else did, which is a high honors. You were involved in the robotics club, the coding club, the YDO program. You got a number of different scholarships, Astanza Alumni Scholarship, the LHSAA Mary Sapienza Math Award, the Anita Bonacorsi Titer, and will be attending, here it is, you'll be attending the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth and majoring in computer science in the fall. Congratulations.
I would like to say, to say thank you to the city of Lawrence. I came to Lawrence four and a half years ago. I didn't know much about, I didn't know much English, but thanks to the city and to the teachers that I met here, I was able to learn English and become the valedictorian of MSc. So I would like to say thank you.
I would like now to ask John DeJesus to come forward. Hey, John. John is the valedictorian of the International High School at Lawrence High School. John earned a 3.7. He, of course, has earned the top academic honor and was awarded the INT Pride Award while being nominated by all the teachers as the top senior. John was also involved in the JROTC as a cadet, and afterward worked at school, worked after school, worked as a student intern for the facilities department. John, you're going to be attending Middlesex Community College in the fall, and we wish you all the very best in your endeavors. Congratulations.
I want to say only one word. Thanks for this opportunity.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Okay, with proper coaching from Mr. Fiatto, Yamilex Moya, would you please come up? You are the valedictorian of the School of Humanities and Leadership Development at the high school. You had a grade point average of 3.94. You, of course, received the L pin for academic excellence and earned high honors as a member, also as a member of the National Honor Society. And you were awarded for perfect attendance for all four years. That's impressive. Involved in the upward bound program, the gear up program, volunteer work at the Spigot River Cleanup, served meals at the Core Una Meal Center, member of the JROTC during all four years of attendance. And you got further recognition with the Leadership Award, the JROTC Repelling Award, and the Community Services Award. That's a lot. You will be attending, and this is very prestigious, the Denison University in Ohio in the fall. Congratulations.
I want to thank you guys for trying to make Lawrence a better city, and I hope to come back in the future.
Yes.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
And congratulations, and come back.
You are making Lawrence better.
Counselors, I actually saved one for last, a little personal privilege. Constituent of mine is receiving an award, so I want to call up Jasmine Torres, please. So Jasmine is the valedictorian of the School of Business Management and Finance at the high school. Her GPA was 4.596. She had high honors during all four years, got the L pin, and National Honor Society during two out of her four years' membership. She was involved in the gear up program for all four years. Student council president, watch out, Mr. Vasquez. Student council president for all four, as a member of the National Honor Society all four years, and was also involved in softball and field hockey, and being team captain during her junior, during her junior varsity and varsity years in field hockey. Jasmine is being awarded a scholarship, the 2016 Azee Family Alumni Scholarship, and she will be attending the College of the Holy Cross in the fall.
I just want to say that it's a privilege that, to have gotten to know all of you guys, and how the example you guys set for our city, it just makes all of us, I'm pretty sure, to come back to our city and show what we are made of.
Thank you, Ms. Mollie. You've done some great work.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We're proud of you.
And while Jasmine is going back to her seat, could I please ask that the family members who are here tonight to please stand up? Family members, please stand up, please, for a second. We want to acknowledge you and congratulate you. Without your push, you would not have gotten here. Counsel President, Counsel Giovanni Rodriguez, I think, has a presentation.
Hello, everybody. I just want to call the headmaster in front of everybody. As part of the school committee, I work together with him. And I was there for two years, and I know how much efforts he put into the students on a daily basis. And I would like to recognize him in public. I know that he don't want to be recognized, but that is something that I would like to give it to him. This is the pain of the city. I would like to take mine as part of the load that we work, that we do here in the city council, and give it to him, because he's one of the person that actually worked very hard for the city.
Thank you very much, Counsel Vice President Mark Laplante. Counselors, if there's a document, is there a document out of order?
2016, please. Counsel President, if we can please take document 2016 out of order.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, and it's been properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 2016 is an education recognition to Billy Creoni by Counsel Armonte. Good evening, counselor.
Thank you, Counsel President. Continuing with the great aspirations and the great people that come out of our city, tonight, I would like to call for the, so that he can receive this proclamation, and his name is Billy Creoni. If you can please come up to the podium. Want to stand on the side? You can please all bear with me, because his accomplishments have been very great. As I start to read this proclamation, I'm sure that you guys are going to hear some names of some very big artists that Billy Creoni here. I cannot refer to him enough as a diamond in the rough. He lives between the two valleys, called Prospect Hill and Tower Hill. Has been here for our youth, is a great prospect in here in our city. He's a great artist, and today, I present him with this proclamation. Second proclamation by the city of Lawrence, by the way. First one in 2011. Be it reserved, resolved, that we, the members of the Lawrence City Council at Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and throughout this proclamation, hereby recognize Billy Creoni for his professional achievements and charitable contributions to the benefit of the Lawrence community and state as follows. Whereas, on June 24th, 2016, Billy Creoni will not only celebrate the release of his fifth studio album, Green, but we, but we also, but we, look, but will also be 25 years in the music industry as an independent recording artist. Whereas, in 1991, Billy Creoni recorded and released his first freestyle dance single entitled, "Girl, Hang It Up." The song has become a trademark fan favorite for 25 years. Whereas, this past February, an album entitled 25 Years, the Best of Billy Creoni, was released on iTunes, Amazon, Spotify, and other music distribution networks. This album is a collection of his most notable, notable songs compiled from creations over the past 25 years, and includes favorites like "Girl, Hang It Up", "It's Okay Boy" with Tiffany, "Dizzy Boy", and more totaling over 14 Crayon classics, Creoni classics. Whereas, over the years, Billy has released four studio albums and several dance singles, attracting worldwide audiences, including places like the United Kingdom, Japan, Indonesia, and Brazil. In fact, his latest album, Green, was recorded upon, was recorded and produced in North... Northern Germany, where dance music, with dance music in the dance clubs. Whereas, the album Green features various forms of dance music from club and freestyle to EDM and 80s-inspired dance tracks brilliantly produced by David Pacheco and... Sebastian of Max and Sebastian Productions of Germany. Whereas, Billy Creoni is a well-known independent artist who developed and created reputation during the 1980s recording with music legends such as Tiffany, Boy George, Samantha Fox, and Salt and Pepper. Billy Creoni's new album, Green, features collaborations with 80s albums artists, Shayna Patron, Miss A, and indie rap artist, Ty...
Ty Books.
Ty Books. Whereas, Fun Usual Records, Billy's independent recording label, is based in Lawrence, which is used to release his own material and other independent artists from Lawrence that have used their musical projects such as Dramatic, Chino, Sunchild, and Dominic Marte. Fun Usual Records has been used to release 1980s musical artists such as Debbie Gibson, Newsos, and... Newsous, and Musical Youth. No other independent record label with the city of Lawrence has equaled the success and achievement of Fun Usual Records, which include international distribution and labels released in the United Kingdom and Japan. I'm almost done, give me two more seconds. Whereas, as a Lawrence city resident, Billy Creoni has always remained rooted and catered to the Lawrence community and is a homegrown creative talent. For the past 10 years, Billy Creoni has sponsored charity projects in the city of Lawrence celebrating the 10th Annual Back to School Giveaway and the 10th Annual Gifts for Kids Giveaway Programs that purchase, collect, and provide local youth with educational materials such as new book bags, school supplies, and new toys during the Christmas season. The program has brought contributions from celebrities including Gloria Estefan, Sheila E., Margot Cho, and Debbie Gibson. Whereas in 2011, musical legend Gloria Estefan acknowledges Billy Creoni as a power person within the city of Lawrence, and Billy's new album, Green, has been favorably acknowledged and promoted by various local publications including Rumba, The Valley Patriot, and the Lawrence Eagle Tribune, oh, sorry, The Eagle Tribune. Whereas on June 24th, this coming June 24th, at Rio's Nightclub, there will be hosted a CD release party of the album, Green, featuring live performances by Billy's longtime friends and renowned legends of freestyle, Shayna of I Want You, and Maria Giggs of Love Letter. So if you guys know those songs, get to Rio's. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, hereby recognize Billy Creoni for his 25 years of success and achievement in music and his charitable contributions to the Lawrence community, further recognizing his status as an A-power person in the city of Lawrence, and hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here on to the 7th day of June 2016. And it's signed by all of us here in the city council. Congratulations, Billy Creoni.
I'd like to say thanks to Lawrence for supporting me for the past 25 years. As much as I love the city, I had to break from the city in 1991 to go to Miami to record my first single, which launched my career. And believe it or not, I broke my leg down in Florida, came back home, and I was still performing. The single had to go on, and I did live shows at Roll on America, Confetti's, I mean, you remember the clubs, Narcissus. I performed with a full leg cast, and that was my early beginnings. And growing up in the 80s, I listened to, well, my idols were Boy George and Cyndi Lauper. In 2010, I was fortunate enough to become friends with Boy George, and we actually recorded a song together called Take Us to the Disco. But Cyndi Lauper being my idol, it's always been a dream to meet her. I've been to the shows, you know, quick meet and greet, you know, but never the one-on-one, you know? And where she's my idol, I'm inspired by her by so much, letting, you know, she lets you know that it's okay to be who you are, be free to be, and all that stuff, you know? So this past, don't laugh, this past, a couple of weeks ago, Boy George and Cyndi were together in Boston and performing, and I was outside by the tour bus. Now, the tour bus is plain black, the windows are plain black, you can't see inside, but they can see out. And I had a hat that had my name on it. And this lady came off the bus, she came down to me, and she's like, "Cyndi wants to see you after the show." And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And she goes, "She's right there in the window, she recognized your name on your hat." Reason being, back in 2008, I recorded a cover of her song, Change of Heart. I sent it to her, and ever since then, she's been following me on Twitter. She follows everything. When the time came, manager said, "When the song True Colors comes on, go down to the left side of the stage and wait for Cyndi." So I went, it's plain black, can't see anything, you know? And then all of a sudden, this short little lady with this bright pink hair, it's like neon, just come and walk in at me, and I'm like, "Oh, my God." And I'm sorry, I was in one of those moments where, you know, shock moment, you know? Your idol is approaching you? I don't know why, but the first thing out of my mouth was, "Do you know who I am?" She says, and I quote, "You're Billy fucking Creoni." And it was hilarious.
I understand, I understand what the language.
I was just saying, as it was, you know, like, I mean, everybody curses. I don't curse, believe it or not, I don't. But I had to let it out, I had to share that story with you, because it's one of those moments that I will never forget. The highlight of my career, that was it right there.
Definitely, congratulations, we're very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to take document 19916 out of order?
Which one?
Is there a second?
Which one?
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Oh, Brandon Mottos.
I'm going to pass a gavel to Council Vice President Mark LaPlante.
I have a very special resolution here to a gentleman that I have seen growing up in the city, and that I am very proud to recognize at this moment. So the city council resolution reads as follows. We, as members of the Lawrence City Council, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize Brando Matos, who I would like to join me at this moment. Brando Matos is an exemplary resident of our city, and hereby we say as follows. Whereas Brando is a student who attended Lawrence Public Schools, Lawrence Family Development Chatter Schools, and is currently attending the Concord Academy. Whereas Brando has been an outstanding student and an exemplary young leader in the city of Lawrence. Whereas in 2015, Brando was given the opportunity to travel to Beijing, China, in a scholarship to conclude his studies for a whole academic year. Wherefore, we, as members of the city council, for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, wish Mr. Brando Matos continued success and many more healthy years, and hereby set my hands and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here to this 7th day of June 2016.
Congratulations. I would just like to say how thankful I am for all the opportunities I've been given, and especially for being recognized for that. I'd like to acknowledge that all the things that I've accomplished have been possible with the support I received from the teachers in Lawrence and from my parents and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you everyone. You're welcome.
Congratulations again. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselors, we have a very bright future for the city of Lawrence, definitely, so let's keep up the good work. Moving up to the top of the agenda, public hearings, there's none. Communications from the mayor, city official, city attorney, there's none. Appropriations, orders, and resolutions. Document 17616 is an appropriation transfer from Free Cash Reserve to DPW's NOAA and ICE Division, Mr. Vice President and Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Council President. This document is sent up to the council with a favorable recommendation to take money out of the Free Cash Reserve, DPW, Snow, and ICE Division, with a sum of $1 million to order a public hearing. Make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
I'm properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is just to order the public hearing, correct?
Correct. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 17716, is an appropriation transfer from Free Cash to Chapter 58 Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Vice President Mark LaPlante.
Thank you very much. Council President of the Budget and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation unanimously voted to send this up to the full city council. This is an appropriation transfer from Free Cash Reserve to Chapter 58 Capital Reserve Fund to the sum of $684,091, and to order a public hearing. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 19616, Fiscal Year 2016 Transfer from Free Cash for a 2011 case, Lapierre versus the city of Lawrence, to court judgments on the amount of $500,000, and it was placed on the agenda by Charles Body, our city attorney. Counselors, I will be sending this document to the Budget and Finance Committee, but can I also get a motion to order a public hearing for our next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none.
Mr.?
Counselor Maldonado.
Is there going to be any information provided by the city attorney regarding this matter?
There will be, there will be, this meeting will be, this item will be referred to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee for review, but pending the review of the Subcommittee, we would also like to order the public hearing to be able to pay out of Fiscal Year 2016's budget rather than Fiscal Year 2017.
If it is possible, I would like to have the city attorney tell us a little bit about this particular matter, especially if it is possible to discuss it in public. Those items that obviously cannot be discussed in public should be left out, but I think it would be, it would be good to hear what really happened in this matter.
I think, I definitely agree with you on that regards. We should get all the appropriate documentation in order to have a vote that is, that we're aware of what we're doing during our next meeting. So I encourage, would you like to make that in the form of a motion to send?
Yes, I do.
To the city attorney?
I do. Make the motion that the city attorney be invited for the...
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment that we, when did you want to have him attend the Budget and Finance Committee through you, Mr. President, or the full council meeting?
At the full council meeting.
The amendment is for the 21st.
Yes.
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay, so it's accepted as an amendment as part of the original motion now. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with the next item on the agenda, is document 19716, and it's an appropriation transfer from the Ex-Ex Tuition Assessment Account to the Continuity Reserve on the amount of $700,000, and it was placed on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ianello, the finance director. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Vice President, are you aware if this will need to also get a public hearing for the 21st? It is not my understanding that it does need, that it needs it.
It's my understanding that we do not need a public hearing for that, it's just the authorization of expenditures, it's not the actual transfer of money.
Thank you. Next document is document 19816, Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Authorization of Revolving Funds. Bellevue Cemetery on the amount of $85,000, Council on Aging, $100,000, Recreations and Parks to be determined, Lawrence Memorial Veteran Stadiums to be determined. It was also placed on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ianello, our finance director, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to committee reports, document 11508, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, the Housing Committee met and discussed this item, and after the discussion, we are sending an item with a favorable recommendation for disposition of 10115 Offa Street Tax Map 116 Lat Five, and this is for the disposition. And I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Discussion?
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Discussion, Counselor Armonte.
Thank you. Now, this being a disposition, I believe that the abutters must have been notified of, because I do see here that it is a company out of Londonderry, New Hampshire. It's a builders company out of Londonderry, New Hampshire, that would be acquiring this property of the vocals through this evening. So I was looking for some information as to where the abutters notified.
Okay, the city's here.
Hey, Liza, thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, Asset Officer Liza Signore.
This was a request for proposal, it was advertised in the newspaper.
I can hardly hear you, hon.
This was a request for proposal, so it was done as a request for proposal, so we did advertisement in the newspaper.
So the abutters were not notified individually to see if they wanted these properties, basically?
They were not.
They were not. Counselors, this evening, I mean, how is it that you're going to put out a bid, that you're going to sell a property, and you're not going to, this has been something that we do often, we dispose of properties, but we let all the abutters know before we go putting it anywhere, because what if they don't read English? What if they don't get the paper? What if they don't like to purchase?
So this is done as any other request for proposal. We do notify abutters when we do a yard sale or when we do a direct disposition.
I can hardly hear you, Liza, I'm sorry, honey.
When we do a direct disposition or a yard sale, we send letters to all the abutters. For a request for proposal, we do, we do follow the law, which is put in an advertisement on the central register. We do an advertisement in the local newspaper, we do it in Spanish and in English, and we also go on the radio station to advertise the properties.
So we do not let the abutters know that this property is for sale?
Not for the request for proposals. For the other type of sales, we do notify the abutters. And this is just following, following Mass General Law, Chapter 30B.
Is this going to be for any type of low-income families, or is this just going to be a straight-out bid buy, or how does that work?
This is just a straightforward sale of a property. They are proposing to build a two-family home.
So I see here that there were nine bids received, and this was the most advantageous. Can, do we have the other bidders, or how much they bid, or any other information except for just the information of the property that was chosen?
So we received for this particular property, we received a total of nine bids, ranging from an amount of $10,150 to $60,000. The requests for proposal are not based on an amount, they're not in auction, they're based on the best proposal received. In this particular sale, it was the most, the highest bidder on the monetary value, and also the best proposal that we found.
So one of the conditions here, if I see on the following conditions of deed, it says I'm sorry, under number four, it says that work must be completed within six months of the closing, the city reserves a right to extend the deadline. So basically, once this closes within six months, we're supposed to have a two-duplex family constructed on the site?
That's the idea.
That's the idea. I, as you know, I was on the Housing Committee for many years, and I was the chair of housing for a couple of those terms. And a lot of the properties that have been already bought by people, nothing's been done on these properties even since back when I was there. So right now, on the conditions and deed restrictions, it's like if nobody in the planning department is following what they said, what they have to do so that the conditions are met under the restrictions of the deeds that we put, that we set forth.
Absolutely. And I understand that in what we're doing, I have disposition for the past year and a half, and what I've been doing is taking an inventory of all the properties that we have sold in the past 10 years, and going back and inspecting those properties to see if the conditions have been met, and we are working on prior sales. And right now, I am following through on everything that has gone in front of you from me.
Well, if we, if we look at it from 10 years back, we're never going to get anything done. We need to start looking at what has been done now, because if they haven't done nothing in 10 years, they're not going to do anything. So if we're going to start 10 years ago, by the time we get to what we sold today, it'll be 25 years from now. So that's, coming from me, that's the wrong approach. We should go back into exactly what we had said that we were going to do, and is that we are going to go and go after these people and tell them, because if not, why even put in here that in six months you have to have this duplex built on here? If these are, if these are not the expectations that we expect from them, then we should change the expectations that we have, because it doesn't make it, it makes it no, it makes it for what, so what, we're just wasting ink on paper? I will be voting against this, this evening, my fellow colleagues, and for the simple fact that there's just, there's just way too much going on in the city of Lawrence, where people just want to get rid of things in a hurry, and nothing's being done afterwards with the properties. And it being, it being that, especially me knowing and seeing, having sat and being the chair of housing, and then vice chair of housing, I know enough to know that this does not get completed by what it says here on the deed and the restrictions, et cetera. does not get completed by what it says here on the deed and the restrictions, et cetera. So why are we gonna put something, like I said, on a piece of paper if we're not gonna follow and force and go through what we need to do to make this happen? So therefore, I will be voting against this this evening, thank you. Do you have, do you have something to say, Council President, 'cause you have a smirk over there on your face, and I'd like to know what was funny to you?
Whoa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's-
I, I, I do.
Council Vice President?
Thank you very much. So a couple of things that I think are important that were highlighted, and I think it bears repeating, and I won't take long to repeat. Number one is that, uh, what, this is the first time that we've actually had an opportunity to start putting limitations as to how long it would take for an applicant to go forward and actually fulfill what we're, that they're asking to do. Before this time, and accret, and, and a lot of credit goes to the Planning Department and Ms. St. Ange for developing this, she said, you know something, we have these open-ended agreements, things happened 10 years ago, and they still haven't built it, and we don't have much, it, it takes a, a, a lot of legal authority to go in and work to try to command someone to fulfill the obligations. So what she rightfully said and came to this committee, to the Housing Committee, that's been shared very well by Councilor Chairman Rodriguez, is that what we wanna do is put a deadline. So she said to them, how long will it take for you to build this? They said, six months. She says, okay, six months is the amount of time that's gonna take it, we're gonna memorialize in this agreement, and if you need an extra, if you need some more time, then, then we, the city, through the City Council, can work on you for an extension. So that's step number one, which I thought was fantastic, they were actually putting some deadlines and accountability to this, that's one. Number two is that, and, and, and the previous speaker should know better, because she was on the committee when this happened, when we started to go forward to say, you know something, we need to figure out if people who are applying for these properties are fulfilling their obligations. So we said, go back, the council said, find out if they're, if they said they're gonna put a fence there, find out if they put a fence there, if they said they're gonna be put parking there, find out, if there's gonna be a structure, find out, report back to us. It's a lot of work, and she has been, and, and, and Ms. St. Ange, and through her department, has been very active in trying to figure out what's been happening on those things, and reporting back to the council. And so far, we have learned that there have been some that have been fully compliant, and there have been some that have not. So the question now is, on those that are not compliant, because the, because the department is doing their due diligence and work, what's going to happen? And so that's what they're wrestling with right now, and maybe we get involved in that, and that's what they're working on. So I, I think what's happening, and I, and I just, you know, it, the, the, the taint that we put on this made it sound like we're doing some, that, that the city is doing something untoward. This entire process has been opened, the entire process anybody can look at, there is a real property task force that is made up of individuals who make the recommendations, that bring it before the committee, and I think we've been doing things, as we have been doing now for many years, above board on this, and the question is, do you wanna support this proposal that has for $60,000, that's gonna provide, uh, homeowners at that location, that are gonna be paying taxes at that location, or not? That's the question. So I, I will support it.
Councillors, any further discussion?
I just have one question of the chairman, uh, I just wanna make sure, is it, uh, is the motion include the, the sale price of $60,000?
Yes, the motion include the, the sale price for this property.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Depeña.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu, noted Counsel Armonte.
No.
Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, noted Counsel Vice President Laplante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes, motion carries.
Six.
Next document on the agenda is Document 18110, Disposition, 1113 Oak Street, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, uh, continuing with our meeting on May 23rd, 2016, uh, the Housing Committee discussed the item, uh, 18110, Disposition of 1113 Oak Street, Tax Map 108, Lot 35. On this matter, um, we, uh, discussed this item, and this, on the bid, the sale price for this, uh, property is $10,000, uh, there is gonna be a development of about $1.5 million on the project, there is gonna be also a, uh, uh, the building, the current building is gonna be theoretically done by Lawrence Community Work, uh, there is a non-for-profit organization from here for Lawrence, and it's gonna be, gonna be, gonna be bringing more jobs to the city, and, uh, and eventually, the tax, uh, on real estate that we're gonna be receiving is about $10,000 for this property. Uh, the, the Housing Committee vote with a, sent this item with a favorable recommendation to the full council, and I would like to make this as a formal motion with a bid, uh, with a sale price of $10,000.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Vice President? Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, noted. Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Armonte.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu, noted. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Depeña.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Abstain.
Noted, and Counsel President.
Yes, motion carries. Next document is Document 18810, Disposition at 73 Spruce Street, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, uh, the Housing Committee also discussed the disposition for item 18810, is 73 Spruce Street, Tax Map, uh, 171, Lot 13, with a sale price of, um, $70,000. Uh, we would like to, uh, also, uh, discuss that there is three lots together, uh, item 188, 10, 189, 10, and then 31215, uh, the, for the total amount of, um, $70,000. We discussed this, and we would like to present this as a committee report.
A motion has been made to accept this document as a committee report, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Counsel Armonte.
So once again, I have the same question, um, and I believe I'm probably gonna get the same answer, but I will ask the question again, thank you, Liza, for, um, coming to the podium. This property, um, the applicant name is K Pro Properties, and they're out of Framingham, Mass, so I believe that, um, the, abutters weren't given any notification either on this, it was just put in the paper?
This was a request for proposal, so.
So the same thing, request for proposal, which means that the, the abutters don't get notified, it gets put into the paper, and, um, if you read it, you didn't, if you didn't, you didn't. K Pro Properties LLC, I'd like to know who's behind, is there any names behind this, or it's just, do we know who, um, who this entity is?
We disposed of a city-owned property to this company, I believe, uh, last year, um, on Basswood Street, it was a property that most likely needed to be demo, and they came in and, um, they did a lot of repairs, the property looks beautiful, so we have, um, they have good experience with this, we have had good experience with them in the past, um, in city projects.
So once these properties go up, incredible.
So the proposal for this is, uh, to build two, three-family homes with off-street parking for at least, um, nine vehicles, um, so this will bring six units to the city, um, in a almost 10,000 square feet lot, it's 9,550 square feet.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Counsel Maldonado?
Yes, uh, Ms. St. Ange, is, is somebody from, uh, K Pro Properties here?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President through you, uh, can you come forward, please?
Good evening, can you please identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Najim Kabir, K Pro Properties LLC, the address is 330 Costetwood Road in Framingham.
Hi, how are you? When are you planning to break grounds, any idea?
I'm sorry, say that again.
When are you planning to break grounds?
As, as soon as possible, well, as soon as we, uh, we close, we'll, we start work.
I don't know whether you are aware that those three lots have been, are being used for a number of years by residents of the area, and that they have planted vegetables and things like that, and, and I was concerned that all the work that they have done there is gonna be torn down, uh, and that's what I'm asking as to when, and whether it would be possible to wait at least until the end of July or August. You haven't started the design process, have you?
Uh, no, uh, we, we can cer- certainly work something out, I did notice that-
The chances are that you will break ground beyond August.
We can work something out like this, sure.
Is it possible that, uh, once you sign the purchase and sales agreement, that you allow those people, the residents in the neighborhood that have planted, uh, vegetables, to allow them until they finish, uh, at the end of July or August?
Could you repeat the question, please? I couldn't hear it.
I'm sorry, is it possible that once you sign the purchase and sales agreement, that you allow the residents of that neighborhood who planted on those lots to allow them to finish, uh, collecting their-
It, it depends on the length of time, but I, I think there is something that we can arrange, uh, would certainly be accommodating for the people who have been losing the, using the land, uh, to, to, to plant things, sure. Uh, it would depend on the, on the timeline, of course, I think, uh, uh, you know, we're at the beginning of June, I think, sure, by July or so would work.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor, so any, Counsel Vice President?
We, we have questions, still.
Thank you very much, I'd like to ask Ms. St. Ange a question, please. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
So during the Housing Committee, I, I think, I think I mentioned it, uh, that there's a significant difference between the top price and the price that we accepted. Did you, we, were, were we ever able to get the difference, and who applied for the top position, and why they weren't accepted?
Yeah, so in your package, I included the top three proposals, um-
I'm looking for that now, can you guide me to where that is?
Pardon? Yeah.
I'm looking through, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so keep going, so there's one, and then there's the second one, and, so the three proposals are included in here, and I'd like to point out that when we did these proposals, we did put on the applications to, um, um, keep the, the neighborhood in mind how the neighborhood currently looks, and the more, um, to comply with zoning, and we're looking for more units for rental, um, and owner occupied, so that's why we had a lot, um, a couple duplex offers, and we went with the more units, which is the six units.
The last part is that we approved the which unit versus the six units?
Uh, because we're looking for, um, something that will look, uh, good in the neighborhood, there's a lot of three-family homes there, um, we thought that the two, three-family homes would be the better proposal.
The Spruce Street, that's, who's the, do we, which district is that in?
District C.
Army C? Yeah, so, a- as I did on the other ones, I, I'd like to ask the Counsel President, uh, his opinion on this matter, because during the, during the, um, Housing Committee, we were fortunate to have, um, representative city councilors there, and we asked, I don't wanna micromanage another city councilor's district, this is your district, Counsel President, um, this may be awkward, but it, is it your intention to support this proposal, or not?
Um, definitely, I, I will be supporting the proposal today, uh, because after reviewing, it will definitely go along with the, uh, houses that are in that neighborhood, and I think it will allow, uh, the neighborhood to maintain similarities, uh, and, and I think that we have to look forward to that type of integrity, uh, of houses in, in the neighborhood, uh, so I, I do plan on supporting it tonight, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, and I, and I know one of the previous speakers wanted a, a name of somebody under K Pro, and inside the packet, there's not only a name, but contact information for that individual, and it's listed in here, so, uh, it's, it is, it is available for anybody to look at.
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes, um, I have a couple of questions too, Luisa. Uh-oh, yeah. Uh, basically, one, the higher bidder on this proposal was $120,000, and, um, we decided to go for a, a, a sale price of 70, because they actually met, uh, some of the criteria that you were looking for. Um, yes, in terms of taxes, uh, and how, how much you're gonna be collecting eventually?
So we are-
Concern that I have, because I mean, uh, we, we're living on the table $50,000, I know that they might have, uh, a better quality on terms of construction and stuff like that, but that's gonna take this, the, the city about, uh, 16 years, if we leave about $3,000 each year in terms of taxes that we're not gonna be, um, acquiring. So, can you, can you solve the, the project a little bit more, because I'm still concerned.
So this was a, a really hard decision for the real estate task, where we were going back and forth, and we had to look at the, what we asked of the applicants, and in the application, as I mentioned before, we asked the applicants to keep in, as I said, this is not based on, on amount, it's not an auction, it's the best proposal based on what, uh, the application says. So in the application, we took into consideration the housing study that was done, we looked at the neighborhood, um, and we, right in the application, we asked them to, um, give us a proposal that's gonna bring more units, that's gonna be, um, that's gonna look good in the neighborhood, that's just gonna blend into the neighborhood, and even though there was a, a gap in value, because we had put that in the proposal, we had to go, not based on the value, because that's not what the proposals are ba- based, based on the proposal, and this was the best proposal.
The other one, the other proposal of 120, they were proposing two, um, uh, two-family houses, right?
Yes.
And, uh, and if we look at the average in terms of taxes, it's about, uh, 3,000 between the two, kind of?
Yes.
I would like to ask, um, Counsel, Counsel Maldonado about, uh, about the area, I know that you, you were concerned about that, um, what do you prefer to sit on there, a two-family, two, two-family, or three, two-families? Two, 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 two-three families?
Through the, through the Counsel President.
Through the President, yes.
Counsel Maldonado?
Uh, number one, we need the apartment, we need, we need a number of units, and since they are gonna be providing off-street parking, I thi- I think that, uh, the number of units will probably help to meet the needs of the city. We have a tremendous shortage of apartments in the city, uh, right now, I have about 125 applications looking, of people looking for apartments, and a lot of my friends who own apartments, uh, don't have anything available, so no question that the more, number of units, as long as we meet the requirements and they meet the, uh, parking requirements, uh, I, I think it would be fine.
All right, no problem. No more questions, I will, I gotta support there, therefore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is, uh, Councillors, this was to approve as a committee report, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to, uh, make the motion to approve the disposition of this property.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made to approve the disposition of the property, uh, for a question before we go on, I know we, we, when I looked at the documentation and the package we've received, uh, Documents 18810, 18910, and 31215 are part of a document, do you want to?
Yes, uh, we would like to have all, everything as a one package.
So, there's a motion on the floor to take Documents 18810, 18910, and 31215 as a block? Is that-
That's correct.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second, uh, all those in favor to take it as a block, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, now, um, Counsel Rodriguez?
I would like to make a motion to approve the disposition of this property.
Motion has been made to approve the disposition, and it's been properly second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next document is Document 5015, Disposition, Document 60, uh, 6466 Basswood Street, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, uh, 50, the item number 1515, this is a disposition of 6468 Basswood Street, Tax Map, uh, 172, uh, Lot 124, and the sale price for this, um, particular lot is about $2,500. Uh, the applicant is Camelia Amparo, she lived in, uh, in 81 and 83, uh, Basswood Street, and, uh, and I would like to, uh, basically, this project is gonna be, uh, to, to make it, to make this lot, uh, for parkings, for about 10 parking spaces, um, for about 10 parking spaces. This is something that we need in the area. She is going to maintain the existing structure, which is dedicated to a veteran on the area, and she's going to make a lot of effort to keep the landscaped and the grass on the area looking beautiful. I would like to make this as a form of a motion to accept the disposition, I mean, for the disposition.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Madonado?
I look at the, I look at the conditions, number seven, it says 90 days, is that enough time for them to do all the work that is, that needs to be done? I mean, I...
I spoke to the applicant, and she indicated that that should be sufficient time, she wants to start right away. But if she does need an extension, we'll be willing to give her a month or two to finish in the fall.
I noticed that there is no, in the other ones, there's wording as to the extension, but in this particular, over here, I don't see that. It may be that we should be open to extend it maybe another 30 days, just in case, so that they would be able to comply, because I think 90 days is a very short period of time.
Question of information.
So...
Council President.
Oh, that's right, yes, I'm sorry.
Question of information.
Sorry.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Clarify?
Question of information.
Okay, no problem. I just want to clarify something, but that's fine, they're really clear.
Are there any further questions, Counselors? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 30915, is a disposition at 1113 Doyle Street. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
30915 is a disposition for 1113 Doyle Street, tax map is 183, lot 23, it's about 10,550 square footage. The price for this, the sale price for this lot is $56,000. The assessment price for this lot is about $3,800. The area is 10,550, like we said before. And the applicant for this particular cell is going to be The Heart Group, Inc., they are located at 235 East Street, Meto and Mass. Part of the condition for this, for this particular cell are four different conditions, they are right here as an attachment, and they're going to be constructing one two-family property with the proper parking spaces available. They were the higher bid on the option. I would like to make this as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Discussion, Counselor Armante.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just looking into the disposition of these properties, I didn't ask this question because there were other homes already on the properties that we were disposing. This subject property, I'm not sure if there was a home there and it had burned down, but I do not believe so, only because this has been open area property, that's like, say, Prospect Hill and Tower Hill, which we do have a lot of those areas. Are we looking as into the impact, because we are, the water impact and all of that situation, that we're having problems already trying to deliver water up into our hills because of our water pressure, PSI, and et cetera. Are we taking into consideration, when we're allowing these people just to come in and build, that this can have an impact on our water table, it can have an impact on our sewage coming in and out? Is this going to make an impact? Are we taking these types of things into precaution? Because these types of things happened in District A, and we are having overflow, we're having sewage coming into other residents, you know, backup coming into their, when they go into do laundry, their washing machines, what they find in their sewage, or when they come down into their basements, what they're finding is that the sewage has backed up, and they don't have the sun pumps or any of that stuff, because they didn't have that type of, you know, residential at the time when their homes were built, et cetera, and now that this water, you know, supply and demand is coming, you know, it's having an impact on these homes. And I was wondering if that's going to be the case, and have we done impact studies to see if we can sell these properties to have these homes built on here? Is it going to make, and what type of impact will it make in the area and for the water?
My understanding on this particular lot is that there was a property there many years ago that burned, and it was demoed.
That must have been decades and decades and decades ago, because as far as I can remember, I don't remember there being any homes anywhere in this vicinity. And I've been here in the city of Lawrence for 39 years. But I guess, but this is just something that I wanted to point out, and being that's there in that area, I know that we're going to be ripping up the streets up in that area, so is it something that, did we look into, would the street be repaved or dug up, and then we're going to redo, rego over that when they build a house, or is that going to be done beforehand? Only because that has also happened in District A, where we've had some developments, and they go in and the city, you know, paves the street, and then we have either the gas company or whomever coming and digging it up, and we end up with the streets worse than they were when, before we paved. So I think that these are things that we need to look at before they get done. Has that been looked at at all? Is this one of the areas that's going to be getting paved, or any city services that we need to be aware of?
You would have to ask the deputy W of the department.
Dan, would you have any answer to that question for me? Mr. McCarthy? Thank you.
Are we discussing Doyle Street?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, because we're going around the city paving a bunch of stuff.
There should be utilities already there, there's a prior house there burnt down many years ago, so the hookups should already be there. The new system that the city's been putting in place will have a new water source, and it'll be direct plumbing into it, it won't be a combined system. And this property is almost 10,000 square feet, but we're only allowing them to build a two-family home, so the rear of this property will all be grass and woods, and a lot of area for stormwater runoff, so we're not concerned about the utilities and those elements.
I just wanted to make sure, because you do know the problem that we have in District A.
Yes.
I didn't want that to be a repeat.
Very aware of that, yes.
Thank you very much. I'm all set with the questions.
Counselors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 34115, declare surplus and disposition. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, once again, we met and we discussed the item 34115, and this is to declare the surplus and a disposition for portion of Kittern Street. It's about, it was about 600, 989 square footage, now it's about 7,924. The sale price for this used to be $7,000, now it's $15,000. And I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Madonado?
Yes. Liza? When you look at the map, Lot A, if you look at the map on the right side that says Lot A, A as in Apple?
Which map?
This drawing.
Oh, okay, yes.
Those properties are abutting perpendicular to Lot A. Do they have access on the other side? On the southern part of the properties?
So I have, if you look at the map, the applicant who was purchasing is Lot A and Lot B. So they will be purchasing this and merging it into their property and making it into one parcel. And if you look at the aerial map...
No, let me rephrase my question. If you look at, for example, the property belonging to Terrance Retell, you see that property there? Does that property have access on the opposite side?
Yes, they do.
It does. So all those properties there have access on the southern part?
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Counselors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 17916, surplus property on 93 Hancock Street. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, the Housing Committee met and discussed this item, and this is, item 17916 is 93 Hancock Street, this is a surplus, we would like to declare as a surplus. Tax map is 184, lot 61, and we would like to, well, the assessment price for this property is about 79,200, and the lot size is about 3,660 square footage. We would like to make that as a form of a motion to declare a surplus.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 18016, adoption of Merrimack Valley Regional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2016. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, we discussed this item, we have Demarcati from the Planning Department here. We actually sent this document with a favorable recommendation, and we would like to adopt this document for the city. And I would like to make that as a form of a motion. With discussion from Demarcati, if you can, please.
A motion has been made, properly second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Counselor Rodriguez, and followed by Counselor Armante.
How are you doing, Demarcati? I would like you to take an opportunity to explain why we should be adopting this document and this for the city of Lawrence, is what's going to be the benefit of it, and how much positive impact that's going to bring to the city.
Certainly, thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Council members. Daniel McCarthy, 225 Vessis Street, I'm the land use planner working out of the Planning Department. The document you have in front of you is, in the documents I provided you, is a portion of a regional plan for the, called the Hazardous Mitigation Regional Plan for the Merrimack Valley. The city of Lawrence is one of 15 participating cities in the Merrimack Valley Planning District, and we're required to work as part of, as one of the member agencies in developing this plan. We work with the federal government, specifically through FEMA, and the Hazard Management Department of the state, which is called MEMA, to come up with a policy, an ongoing policy. Five years ago, this council actually adopted this, and this is a re-resolution of an updated document. This is a 2016 document, we've added specific conditions to it, and what the plan does is it shows what things the city has done in the past five years to improve safety issues regarding natural disasters. It goes through all the different types of one, this is a national program, not just a regional. The natural disasters that we encounter the most deal with the snow events, flooding, on a rare occasion tornadoes, and fire hazards. So those are the ones that are mentioned in there, and you see, we address the bridges, we address the flooding issues, and we also have what's called a mitigation plan, which goes to the future and says what the city plans to do. So participating in this program is important on several avenues. One, the biggest one is it allows the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Plan that the nation provides for flood insurance. Secondly, it allows the city to participate in national emergency management funds that become available. The last four snow events over the last six years, the city has realized nearly a million dollars in money that was paid out from the federal government for plowing, for damage caused by blizzards. Same thing with the flooding of the Mother's Day flood of 2006. City received a great deal of money to replace pumping stations, to handle erosion problems, and to participate in this program, we have to work, and we've spent a lot of time, a lot of the department heads, myself, have been working for the last five years on this new program. It's drafted mainly by the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, but as I said, 15 communities participate in that, so I did leave a link on your emails, and it's in your package of papers, that you can go on and see the full plan, which is 427 pages. I redacted the 26 pages or so that are just specific to Lawrence, and I've given those to you. So that's what the plan does, and the benefit, I'd say, is enormous in the amount of protection and insurance, and hazard mitigation grants, and emergency storm money that we receive from the federal government during these events.
Okay. Counselors, are there any questions? Seeing there's none, all those in...
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Counselor Madonado?
Mr. McCarthy?
I'm sorry, Counselor Madonado. Counselor Armante, you had a question earlier?
It's answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Madonado?
Mr. McCarthy, you mentioned in your letter about a public hearing. Does this require a public hearing? The adoption of this, does this require a public hearing?
Does it require, no, it doesn't. It doesn't, because this is a regional plan, it's not a city ordinance per se, it's a regional plan, and what we're doing is we're adopting a resolution, it's on page two, and we're adopting a resolution to be a participant in that. As I said, we've already voted on this twice, we're already a member group of the MPPC, and the federal government allows municipalities to do individual plans, and some of the biggest cities like Boston may have that, but they also allow us to do as a region. So the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission works with FEMA, and the requirement that FEMA has is that we have to go to the legislative bodies of each community and have a vote on it, but there's no requirement for a public hearing.
No, the reason why I mention is, in your letter, one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph at the end, it says, I have taken the Lawrence specific session from the full document, and attached them here for your review prior to public hearing.
Yes, I do see that. The public meetings aren't necessarily for this body. We did have a series of public meetings that I participated in regionally, I also went to a number of classes, Chief Moriarty attended some, I actually have gone to over four public
I call to order in the chamber.
Public participation issues that are regional rather than city orientated, and I can, actually, I think it's four or five fire chiefs that have been working on this project in the last five years, so, yeah, we've been well attended and well represented.
Counselors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next document is document 25215, stop sign four-way at Hampshire and Center Street, was based on the agenda by myself. Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Mr. One is going to pass the report, Tom.
All right, thank you so much.
Counsel Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Item 25215 is a four-way stop sign on Hampshire Street, placed by Council President Vasquez. This item was sent to the full council, awaiting for recommendation from the police department. Council President?
Would you like to make a motion to accept as a committee report?
I would like to make a motion to accept as a committee report, yes.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve as a committee, to approve the committee report, and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, can I please get a motion to send correspondence to Officer Scallon and provide us a report? Mr. Clerk, please note on this, and this has been on the agenda, please let Mr. Scallon know that I have requested this since 2015 multiple times, and I want it to read like this, it is not acceptable by Council President Vasquez that you have not provided a report on this item. I want it to be like that. I have requested that multiple times, and it is not acceptable to me that he has not submitted it. This, he said at one point that there was not a need for a stop sign there, we had a mayor accident at that intersection.
Council President, may I?
Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
I just would like to clarify in terms of a stop signs and what is required for a stop sign and what is not required for a stop sign. And the city of Lawrence, we've been following the police department to get recommendation from them, but we shouldn't be only looking into what's the safety concern of the aspect. If we're going to propose a four-way stop sign, we got to be looking into the other seven warrants. If one of those warrants, according to the MUTCD, which is the federal regulations, if one of those items met, it's enough, that's it, it's recommended. It's recommended.
Yep.
From the Police Department, we've been getting the safety, the safety part of that story. We can definitely do something else about, about this issue. I have proposed a couple of stop sign, and I haven't received anything from me as well. But we should, we should move, we should move forward with any request, if it is any mayor accident, or if it is any particular concern on the area, or any, any warrant study that we can perform. I personally have been, I've been looking forward to, to do my own studies and recommend to the council.
Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez.
So I don't know, I don't know what you want to do with this.
Let's, can I please get a motion to send correspondence to Officer Scallon and at the same time, request to order a public hearing for our next meeting?
I will second that. If I can just, I want to say that I also have the same problem. There has been items like from Cornish Street that I've been sitting on ordinance, waiting for this to come back. There is also an item regarding the circulation of drop-offs and pickups from the Partham School for the kids, and that still hasn't come up yet either. There have been lots of documents that I've been sitting down at that level, and I believe, I'm not sure for what reasons, but if it's coming up that it's because we're not getting the reviews of the persons that we need to, then I would like that added to the correspondence. That any and all of the old documents that are on there either give a recommendation, or we will proceed.
Thank you. Council President. So in terms of this, I'm being part of the Ordinance Committee for a while now. And I think that we need to understand also that Scallan, Officer Scallan, it's, he's doing his job at the Police Department and also doing all this. It's a lot of work. We got to understand that, but we need to move forward with, with the items that we need. So we need to be, we have to look for another solution.
I agree.
For this item, for this situation. I mean, it's something that as a city, we need all those, I believe we have to have a stop sign in every intersection. We need to have the proper study. But that's something that we should be, we should be discussing to see if we can change things up. Because I have met with Officer Scallan, and he have a lot of work. We got to understand that. But still, we, we have to move, move things up, speed it up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Reyes.
Thank you, Councilor President. It's basically just repeating what Counselor Rodriguez was saying. I met with him a couple of times, just looking for, and for the report. And Councilor Monte was right, you know, it's been, sitting on the agenda for a long time.
Since school started.
Yeah, we've been sending recommendation. Nothing is coming back. We also know that he's not only dealing with any, any requests that we send from here. And I believe that he has enough in his plate. I think we need to come out with some sort of solution, but instead of be asking him, we have to provide some kind of resources. Maybe we can use city DPW, I don't know. I mean, that is something that we as a body, putting something together and just to kind of come out with a solution. What I can do, since I'm the chair of the ordinance, that I can go through the agenda and just to kind of look how many items we are still waiting for. And then just kind of send as the package, see what he has ready, and he can send it back to us, and we're going to decide what we are going to do with the new items.
I agree.
Because what we are doing is we continue adding more and more and more, and seems like it's nothing has been done, when I know that he has been right on top of it, you know. And I'm just quite, I mean, I don't want to speak for him, but I know that it's taken a long time, and I don't think it's, it's his fault. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reyes. Mr. Counselor Maldonado.
I remember having a conversation with Officer Scallon, and I think it may be a matter of, of being overloaded with other work.
Yep.
And the solution may simply be asking the chief to provide Officer Scallon with enough time to respond to our request. So I think what we should do is also direct a letter to the chief of police, asking the chief to assign Mr. Scallon to dedicate enough time to this council on the request that we make continuously, month after month. And I would like to make that in front of a motion.
Second.
Motion, we have a previous motion. Who's the author of the previous motion?
Council Reyes. Council Reyes has a motion, a previous motion already on the table, to send a letter and order a public hearing, seconded by Councilor Monte, who wanted to join in on that letter.
Will you accept?
May, Mr. President, may I then add as a, as an amendment to the motion?
Do you accept?
And we also send a letter to the chief.
Okay.
That way, it would be only one motion.
So motion, the amendment to the motion has been accepted by Councilor Reyes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on, document. Counselors, can I please get a motion to take, well, we order a public hearing?
We need to order a public hearing.
The public hearing is ordered.
Whenever it's coming.
For the next meeting, yeah. So we, no, we'll definitely get a report for the next meeting.
So what, Councilor President?
We will get a report for the next meeting.
So what we're going to do, are we going to be sent for a public hearing? And then table if we haven't got any report?
Well, that's fine.
Is that what we're going to do?
I don't see why we shouldn't get the report for the next meeting.
Right.
So we should have a public hearing for, for then. I am, because it will happen. Otherwise, I will have to speak the way I did earlier, which I don't do often.
No, please.
Moving on with the agenda, document ninety-six sixteen is a modification of Devonshire Road to One Way from Hale Street to Adams Street. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Well, a member, member of the ordinance. All right.
Was actually with us here for one night.
Yes, we would like to, we actually analyzed this item and sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We would like to order a public hearings for this. I would like to make that as a form of, a form of a motion.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing. It's been properly seconded and discussed. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one oh nine sixteen. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yes, the item one oh nine sixteen is a Tattoo and Piercing Studios. They would like to amend the I-two commercial district to be to secondary commercial. One of the board from the city's analyzed the situation. They sent a recommendation approving this, and we would like to order a public hearings for this.
Okay.
And we like to make, we like, we like to make that as a motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Discussion? I just.
Councilor Monte and Councilor.
I just have a quick question. So this is just going to be amended for, it's in an I-two right now, and it needs to be in a B-two?
It's an I-two, and, and after the, after the zoning board analyzed the issue, they recommend to change, to be changed to be two. And it was, they recommended four to zero, with a four to zero vote. And we adopted that recommendation, and now we would like to order a public hearing for this.
They are on Parker Street, correct? Is this what's across from Mr. Tux? They're on the bottom of, what is it, Class Inc. or something that was there? The parking lot?
I believe they are, yes. I believe they are, yes.
One Parker Street, that's correct.
One Parker Street, yes.
So is it advantageous to go from industrial to business on that, on that? Because they are, because of the area that they're in? That is an industrial area. It's not a business area?
Well, the zoning board analyzed the situation, and they recommended to be, to change from I-two to B-two. I don't know exactly why they recommended, but they went through, and they analyzed the issue, and they, they agree upon it.
Would that make an impact, or would that change anything that has to do, say, with their taxes? I would need a little more information as to who requested for this to go from one to the other? Was it the zoning board, or was it the people themselves? And what was the reason for it to want to be changed from I to B?
Well, we have a request from the, from the Tattoo and Piercing Studio. We send it over to the zoning board. The zoning board analyzed the issue, recommended.
Is there, is Mr. Santana here? Mr. Louis Santana, no?
Mr. Santana wouldn't be here. We ask him to come for the public hearing.
We only order a public hearing.
I just would, I just wanted to know what, what the reason was to request it from going from, from an I to, to a B-two?
May I, Mr. Chairman, just information?
Counselor Maldonado.
The I-two will not allow.
The tattoo place.
The tattooing place. And because the business is there, and there are other mine, small stores in that particular area, that's why the zoning board recommended that it be changed to B-two.
So just, just for them downstairs, right? Because what I'm trying to get at is that, that is the only business that is on that little space. Everything else there is industrial.
It's industrial, that's correct. So it's just that area.
That's what I want to make sure of, that it's not that they're changing anything for anything else, because that entire, it's, it's industrial. It's not a business area. So therefore, I wanted to know what the recommendation was to make this a business instead of.
The recommendation is, is only for the business.
Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Just two things to clarify. So this is a tattooing and piercing studio. It's from allowing it to go on to B-two if there's a special.
I-two.
It's called special what?
Special permit.
Special permit. And just to clarify, the planning board is the one that actually gave the, the recommendation on this. I look forward to the public hearing next week, learning more about it, and I'm sure the sponsors will be there as well. And I look forward to hearing the arguments for and against why we should or should not allow that to go forward. Thank you.
Just to clarify, yes, what's the planning board?
Is there any further, seeing there's no further discussion?
I was just wanted to close by saying that I have nothing against them. I know the family very well. I, I know the loss that they just had in their family, and I want to give them my condolences. But I just want to make sure that we're doing the correct thing, not just for the person who wants to continue to be and have their property, their business there, because they have been there already for a long time. I just want to make sure that it's advantageous for them, and that we're not trying to do something that we're not supposed to be doing with this property. Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one eleven sixteen, No Parking. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yes, it's, this item was put together by Counselor Abdul, and it is a no parking, basically a drop-off pickup area in front of forty-one point five Taylor Street. We have a recommendation from Officer Scallon, and he is recommending this item, and we would like to order a public hearing for this. I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one thirty-three sixteen. Mr. Chair from, Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, Iglesia de Dios Pentecostales requesting permission to use the Campanion Park on July, on July thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, from three P.M. to six P.M. That is including, that is including setup time and cleanup time. After we analyzed the situation, we send it, we send it with a favorable recommendation. And we will, I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none.
By the way, Council President.
Counselor Rodriguez.
They also going to be, going to be on, on the corner of New Betty and Garden Street on July eighteenth, Conning, Conning, Conning Park on July twenty-fifth, of corner of New Betty and Garden Street on August twenty-second, and Cronin Park on August twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, from five P.M. to seven P.M. I would like to add on my motion, please.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one forty-five sixteen. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, La Iglesia Montes de Oración is requesting permission to use the Cronin Park on July eighteenth, William Kennedy Park on July ninth, Estoro Park on August twenty, and Borghian Park on September third, two thousand sixteen, for the timing of two P.M. to six P., to seven P.M. That's including the setup time and the cleanup time.
Counselors.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Chair second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one forty-seven sixteen. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, this is a transient vendor, although the, the transient vendor for Raymond Gonzalez. All of the paperwork, it are on place, and, and we analyzed the issue, and we like to make that as a form of a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one forty-nine sixteen. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, this is a transient vendor as well. It's a renewal. The person live on one forty, on one fifty-four Martin Street. This is the Friofrio. It's put together by Antonio Javier. I would like to make that as a form of a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one fifty sixteen. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
As well, this is a transient vendor for the Centen. The person live on six sixty-five Excess Street. It's for the, for Jose Ramon. The Centen is for the Friofrio. And I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one fifty-one sixteen. Desfile Dominicano. Mr. Vice Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Yes, Desfile Dominicano is requesting permission for the, for the closing of Mills Street on Metuam Street on Sunday, June twelfth, two thousand sixteen, from three P.M. to eleven P.M. for the Dominican night. The Ordinance Committee analyzed the, the situation and would like to, and send it with a favorable recommendation for approval. I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor, Vice President LaPlante.
This is my district. I used to be counselor, current counselor in District B's area as well. So we, we know that there's the Washington Mills that live right around there. Washington Mills is a residential area. And I just, you know, those poor people, when they're sound, that is going down the street. I know this is going to eleven o'clock. I need to get some assurances that we're not blaring loud music with residents who are, this is a Sunday night, the very next day, a lot of those people are working people that need to go work on their jobs. So I need to get some sort of assurances that we're not going to have music till eleven. I mean, I, I think nine o'clock's plenty late for loud, for, for, for music to go on. I'm just, want to get more details as to how that's going to play out.
I have a couple of.
Through you.
Yes, please. Yeah, there is going to be music there. Just, just, just to let you know. They're going to have an artist to close, and that's going to be till, pretty much till eleven. Exactly, am I correct?
Yes.
So, yes, there's going to be music.
Okay, that's gonna be a real problem, uh, for me to vote in favor of this. We cannot ignore that there are people that are living in that area. And I realize this is a very good cause and I realize that, that this is a, a part of a festival. And I get that. But when you put something together that is right there where there's residential areas, I sometimes wonder, why do we pick the areas where there's people that are living there? To have, there's music, and I get, and music's not a bad thing, but if it's loud music, that's a completely different thing.
Well, that's a perception, Council, um, uh, LaPlante.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Sure.
Councilor LaPlante currently has the floor. As soon as he finishes, I'll, you, I'll.
Sure.
Allow you to speak.
So, i- i- you know, I think the argument is, it's a perception and it's not necessarily just a perception. It's called a nuisance and nuisance is, is the language of the law. Uh, we sometimes have codified that in the books and we also have case law that gives it as well. When I say nuisance, it's actually a legal term.
Holy cow.
Holy cow is not a legal term, but a nuisance is a legal term. And when I say that, it's not in the normal way that a nuisance, like we got a three-year-old that is yelling at you and it's, and you're trying to get something done, it's a nuisance. It's, it's not like that. But the point here is that we got people that are living in that area and that, and that the, 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 um, noise ordinance is still in effect. Even when we provide for these things, we still have to have boundaries from, for that stuff. And so I just want to get assurances that we're not going to be impacting people's quality of life, quiet enjoyment. They want to go to sleep at ten, they want to be able to read a book at ten, they want to be able to conduct their activities at ten. And I wouldn't want that by my house if I'm trying to get to sleep and there are working families that are trying to get stuff done. So I don't want to talk anymore about that, I just want to make sure that I've got assurances that those folks aren't going to be impacted, that's all.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes, I've been, I just want to make, make sure to clarify that it could be a perception, I mean, that's my point of view, that's all.
Councilors, are there any further discussion? Councilor Maldonado?
I want to hear from the, from the folks about that. They're the organizers, I want to hear from them, Council President.
Uh, Councilor.
Would you mind if I did something, if you'd be okay?
Will you mind if they answer?
Let me, let me simply stay, uh, put my few words and then, uh, every time we have a festival, whether it's on Common Street or the park, or whether it's on the South Common, uh, it is obvious that we are going to have some noise. When we have the festivals, the, uh, the Italian Festival, the Three Saints on Common Street, there are a lot of people elderly living around on, on Common Street. And it is obvious that we're going to have some noise. And I would say that in most occasions, uh, people have behaved and the, the organizers of these festivals have behaved quite well, uh, keeping the, the time and the music at a level that is, that is, that is reasonable. So I don't see how this is different than any other festival that we have conducted on Common Street where, uh, Common Street is surrounded by, uh, all kinds of people living on Common Street, uh, on, on Newberry, on Jackson Street, uh, uh, on, on Haver Street. So this is not any different. And, and if we're gonna start setting conditions on one, then we might as well set conditions on all of them. So, uh, I, I think eleven P M is a very reasonable time. Most people don't go to bed. Most people go to bed by eleven o'clock, so by that time, the music will be over.
Councilors, um, we do have representatives from the organization before us, if there's no further questions, please. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Anna Levy, I'm living on one-six-seven Prospect Street and I'm a member of the Dominican night or the File Dominicano because now is not, uh, we are celebrating, we're going to be celebrating both of those, uh, events. But the one that is being discussed tonight, I think that I don't think so in, we've been having those event for so many years. And I don't think so that it's gonna bother the, the life. And also, I don't think so that the noise is gonna affect the enjoyment of the life of anyone who's living in the area. I'm sorry, but it's, uh, like, Councilor Maldonado said, every time is always a problem when we talk about Dominican night or so many other celebration that we are going to do. And last year, we had a night and gr- a very great event. We had in the park more than five thousand people. We stayed almost to the same times and everybody went away, you know, in a peaceful way and we had no problem. So the same thing, we had an event, um, on August of the last year, where we brought a lot of people and we had a singer. And I don't think so that were any comment or no complaint about having any problem in the city or around during that event that we be having. So we would like to thank you, your approval and I would like, you know, to, uh, say thank you in front, so, in, in the name of the committee for anything that you can do that we can have the celebration on Sunday, uh, the twelfth.
With the, with the author of the motion of accept an amendment to reduce the hours to ten o'clock rather than eleven o'clock?
No, I cannot accept the mo- that amendment because, I mean, there's already an arrangement for an artist that, uh, that, uh, they're, they have it in place, I'm sorry.
So I'm clear, so we, an artist, before the council even approved it, artists have already been approved to come over there?
Uh, the, the, the problem is that those artists, they, they, they've been booked for, for quite a bit because, I mean, of the schedule. And, uh, they have the, the honor to have that artist, which is very, 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 very good and expensive. So I, I, I wouldn't play with it, with the time because, I mean, that's gonna be a concern for the, for the development of the event. I'm sorry, I cannot accept it.
Amendment has not been accepted, Councilor Reyes.
No, actually, you know, i- it's just a question, um, without respect to Councilor LaPlante. Have you ever received any phone calls complaining about that? Because I live in the area and I never receive any complaints of people, I mean, knowing that this is only once a year. Probably you are getting message that we not. Because never complains, never hear anything. I think it would just kind of ask then if it was any problem in the past that we might not. But, um, other than that, you know, it's like I say, never heard any complaints, never phone call. But, you know, for the way that you've been speaking on behalf of that, I'm assuming that you've been getting phone calls.
Thank you, Councilor, I appreciate through you, Council President. I, I, listen, this is not an easy thing for me to stand up and say, because I realize what's happening when I make comments like that. And I realize the reactions that I get when I make comments like this. And I realize what happens in the community tomorrow when I make comments like this. I totally get that, but I also have a responsibility, yes, I do get complaints, to answer the question. I do get complaints, um, and part of it is because of the way our city is, is, and I say this every year, the way that our city is done. It's, we're, we're skilped on a hill, there are hills to the sides, Prospect Hill, there's Tower Hill, there's, uh, there's, uh, Mount Vernon, uh, and then there's the basin of the city and then the sound carries upward. So I do get complaints from, from, it's the weird thing, not only from citizens in our city, people call me from North Anover and Anover, and I realize we don't really care about what's going on in those communities. But it's, the sound goes out and it does go out. And the police department have records of this as well. So I'll, that's part of it. And then I, I know that we, we have people that live there, I've said that already. And some of us are at large councils and we rep- they represent those people as well. And we need to at least factor that they have certain rights to, we don't want to see, we don't want to see the festivals go down. We don't. We want to see the festivals thrive, it's an important part of our city. The various ethnic groups during this time of year provide a certain pride, certain celebration of culture, and it adds to the certain amount of what makes our city so different than many other communities. Different, we have people traveling from all over to come here, to be a part of this. And so we want to celebrate the, the different things and it doesn't make a difference, I wish I, I wish my ethnicity had a parade or something. The French Canadians, we've got nothing. The Italians have something, the Irish have something, French, we don't, we don't have anything. So I, I actually am a little jealous of the other communities in our city that have something that they can go ahead and celebrate. So I'm not anti-celebration, but I do think that within the realm of what we try to do, we try to work with other folks that are living here, we try to accommodate people who are living in our city who may have certain needs. And I disagree that having something going to eleven o'clock regardless, and we don't pay any attention to the sound when there's people living in a major complex and we say, that's okay, they can suck, they can suck it up for a couple hours, that's, that's all right. It's just once a year, but that's once a year for that and maybe some other things as well. And we keep saying, you folks don't matter this one night. And, and that just, as someone who represents those people, who live there, a variety of people from all across the area, I have a hard time supporting something when they essentially are being sort of disregarded. And I'm their voice, a variety of people, people that look like me, people who don't look like me, okay? Cuts across the board, because people still have to go to work the next day regardless of what you look like. We all, many people have jobs, et cetera.
Can we call a question?
Some of them have families, et cetera, so.
Move to call a question.
So that's the way I make that point, so.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Thank you for your patience, Councilor, I appreciate it.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council DePena?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Absolutely, yes.
Council Monte? Council Monte? Let's say yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Council Maldonado?
Yes.
Council of President Rodriguez noted, Council LaPlante?
No.
And Council, Council President?
Yes, the motion carries?
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Next document, thank you, the document has been approved.
There's another document there.
It's another document, right there.
Or the other. Uh, next document is document one fifty-two sixteen, which is the, the File Dominicano as well. Mr. Vice Chair from the ordinance committee.
Yes, the Desfile Dominicano requests permission to use the Campanion Park Common, uh, on August fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, from three P M to eleven P M for the parade. And, um, we analyzed the situation and sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation and I would like to make that as a form of a motion. With the time, three P M to eleven P M.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one fifty-six sixteen.
Thank you, Councilor For.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next document is document one fifty-six sixteen, Community Health Worker Reclassification. Mr. Vice Chair from the ordinance committee.
Yes, uh, item one fifty-six sixteen, uh, is a Community Health Worker Reclassification, uh, from Bonet, it is, he's supposed to be here. Yes, we actually voted in favor of this item with a modification, a proper modification that they provide to us and, uh, we would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second. Discussion?
Councilor Rodriguez, is your motion to order a public hearing? With discussion with the city clerk, I believe we might need.
We need a public hearing for this, yes. Um, my motion will be, uh, to order a public hearing.
So motion has been made by Councilor Rodriguez, properly second by Councilor Reyes, is kind of discussion, you still have one? Have discussion, Councilor Monte?
I, I'll have, we'll have a discussion at the public hearing. I'll wait till the public hearing.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one sixty-seven sixteen, Movimiento Puerto Ricano Centro para el Desarrollo. Mr. Vice Chair from the ordinance committee.
Yes, the Movimiento Puerto Ricano Centro para el Desarrollo Inc., it's requesting permission to use the Campanion Common on Thursday, June sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, from six P M to ten forty-five to celebrate a Puerto Rican night. We analyzed the situation at the ordinance committee and, um, sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next document is document one sixty-nine sixteen, National Grid. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, would you like to take document one?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Uh, item one sixty-nine, one seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two as a block?
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes, we would like to order a public, we would like to, we analyzed the situation and, um, and, uh, I would like to make a motion to all, to order a public hearing for document one sixty-nine, one seventy, seventy-one, and seventy-two.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one seventy-four sixteen, Transcend Vender License, Mr. Vice Chair from the ordinance committee.
Yes, this is, this is a renewed license and, um, all of the paperwork is in place, we analyzed the situation and, um, and we would like to make that as a form of a motion to approve this transient vendor for Olga Jimenez.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
You're welcome.
Moving on to withdrawals, document two fifty-eight fifteen, Black Diamond Cultural Event. Councilors, can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councilors, all business.
Council President? I take document one thirteen sixteen off of the table, off table manners?
Document?
What document?
Which? Which document?
One thirteen sixteen, I dumped a gun on that, I'm sorry.
Document one thirteen sixteen. Uh, fiscal, uh, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, document one thirteen sixteen, fiscal year two thousand fifteen, city audit.
I'll come back to everyone, I'm sorry.
Councilor, Council Vice President, we should have done this earlier.
Thank you, Council President. One of our at-large colleagues requested that we have a presentation or at least an ability for, uh, for the auditing firm to come before the council to provide or answer any questions this council may have with respect to the most recent audit. So I would, and I would like to request that, um, the officials with Powers and Sullivan come to the microphone and, and take any questions or that councilors may have. Perhaps a brief overview might be in order through you, Council President.
Good evening, Councilors, I'd just like to introduce Dick Sullivan. He's a partner in charge of Powers and Sullivan who has been doing our audit for the last approximately six years. Dick?
Good evening, thank you for seeing me tonight. What I thought I'd try to do in as expeditious way as possible is just give you an idea of how the audit went, what we do in conducting it, and some of the results that I wanted to share with you as a result of what we found. The way the audit kind of works is we break it up into two pieces. We do some work in the spring and some work in the fall. The work in the spring is designed to do a lot of things that aren't specific to June thirtieth date and there are a number of things that need to be done. For instance, the city expends about thirty-six million dollars worth of federal funds, we have to audit those. So we get that done in the spring. We look at the budget, if there's no debt been issued, we look at debt. We do a lot of test of transactions, which consider the revenue cycle, the payroll cycle, the, um, general entry cycle, as well as the, uh, expenditure cycle. And we make sure that, you know, the policies, procedures, and internal controls you expect to have over those types of transactions are in place. And we look at those too. Then we come into year end and, for lack of a better word, we walk down the balance sheet. We look at your cash, your capital assets, your receivables, your payables, your long-term debt, your pension liability, your compensated absences, and your OPEB liability. The biggest numbers that we look at, we spend a lot of time is on cash because it's a liquid asset, probably has the most risk associated with your balance sheet. You had about seventy-six million dollars worth of cash at year end. We pretty much tie that to the penny, very comfortable with those numbers. The biggest thing that's happened this year for you in terms of your financial statements that somebody asked you was there was something called Gatsby sixty-eight that was implemented. Gatsby sixty-eight required that you put the pension liability that previously had only been part of your back notes, stuffed in the back, not on the balance sheet, put it right face on the balance sheet. That number was a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars in FY fifteen, a significant amount. Your biggest other liability on the balance sheet other than debt is your OPEB liability. At the end of June, of two thousand fifteen, you had a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars on that. The combination of those two things puts you in what we call a net, uh, deficit position for your net assets. It's not actually a really bad thing because pretty much every city and town in Massachusetts is experiencing the same thing. But it is a significant number and a number that now is not just like I said back in the bal- in the footnotes, it's on the front of the balance sheet. But the way you run your city is really looking at the general fund, working with the budget, making the appropriations and making the vote you do whether you use free cash or not. When you look at it from that perspective, the city actually didn't do bad in FY fifteen. Your original budget is balanced and then during the year you vote to use free cash, like I heard some votes tonight. And during that time, the use of free cash is something that you're taking your reserves to make expenditures. You had anticipated to use about six million dollars worth of free cash in FY fifteen. You only used two point seven. That's actually a positive performance because you didn't have to use as much as you thought to make your budget balance. I would consider, the way I've seen the budget and the way I've seen things work, that you would have been structurally sound, reasonably structurally sound from a revenue and expenditure standpoint for a few years now. When you look at your revenues, um, your revenue stream, you exceeded budget by just under one percent. Or in this case, it would be two point three million dollars. When you look at your expenditures, you actually spent about. When you look at your expenditures, you actually spent about one percent less, or two point five million dollars. Those are good things to look at from a budgetary standpoint, because what you're doing when those things happen, if you have excess revenue collections that goes to free cash, if you don't spend your full budget, that also goes to free cash and replenishes what you anticipated to use in the current fiscal year, which is a good thing. Another positive trend that I've seen over the years is your collections of real estate and personal property tax. I know there's been a lot of effort in that, and I think it's very fruitful. At the end of two thousand and fifteen, you collected about ninety-six percent of your commitment. That's a significant increase, because back in two thousand and ten, you only collected eighty-nine percent. What that means is, back in nineteen, two thousand and ten, you were leaving eleven percent on the table, and now you're only leaving four percent, which is excellent. Unassigned fund balance, or unreserved fund balance, is the things that the, um, the rating agencies look at, and to make in determination as to whether, or let's call it the, how fiscally capable a community is. At the end of last year, you had ten point seven million dollars in unreserved fund balance, just under four percent of your total appropriation. The bar is about five percent and above, but you're very close to that. The significance of that, though, and I think you received a small increase in your rating not too long ago, is that back in two thousand and nine, you were only two point nine million dollars, or one percent. So when you go from two point nine million dollars to ten point seven, or one point one percent to three point nine, those are significant accomplishments that I look at as your auditor, from a perspective of how is the city doing, where is it trying to go? You have some other operations called the enterprise funds, all three of them broke pretty much even, or had a little surplus. They're designed to pay their, to pay their own debt service, and they in fact did. The pension fund did a little better than it had in the past, it actually increased about twelve million dollars, most of that is related to the market conditions, the, the stock market's doing better, most pension plans are also doing better. When you look at some of your major capital additions, I would say the water and sewer fund had the most significant, about eleven million dollars, and that was mostly for the, uh, the meter project, as well as infrastructure improvements that were made. And on the governmental side, uh, you spent about three million dollars on park and road improvements, and also another one point million, one point four million dollars in school improvements. Finally, looking at the balance sheet as a whole, your debt service, you, um, issued three point four million dollars, most of it to the schools, some of it for the enterprise funds, but your debt service, one of the things you want to measure is what's your debt service as a percentage of your overall budget? It's four point six percent, that's fairly healthy. You don't want it to get lower than that, because that means you're probably not paying attention to some of the infrastructure or vertical needs you have for your assets, but at four point six percent, that means you can manage it, and that's actually a good number to be at. So when you think about some of the things I've talked about, the differences of Gatsby sixty-eight being implemented and, and the, um, the operations of the general fund, what it comes down to, in fact, the only thing we own in this whole report of seventy-something pages, is the opinion. You had an unmodified opinion, which is the best you can get in what we do. All the reporting deadlines, as we see them, were met, there are still some things that we have to do for the D O R. that they require, and we met those too. One of the things that I'd like to share with you is that we work closely, obviously, with the finance people, and, um, for lack of a better word, we come in like the Marines, and we try to do as much as we can as fast as we can. Our questions were answered correctly, our questions were answered quickly, and we always received what I consider to be timely responses to things that we try to do. There are things that we have to do every year, and then there's those things that we do that we call add our little professional skepticism to it, we ask questions that hadn't been asked before, and I was, I'm very pleased to respond to you or tell you that, um, we were happy with all the responses to those inquiries. So from a summary standpoint, we're kind of in the business of negative assurance. There were no internal control issues that I have to share with you, there were no significant deficiencies that I have to share with you, and there were no material weaknesses that I have to share with you, which is a good report cut from an audit perspective. There's another report that we also issued, it's called a Report on Federal Awards. This is the report that's required by what was known as the A one thirty-three, and it basically looks at your federal grants, and we have to test them. In this year, you spent thirty-six point four million dollars worth of federal money, we tested eighteen million dollars of that. We looked at Title One, Special Education, Improving Teacher Quality, and what's called Ara, Race to the Top. Um, we look for compliance issues, we look for actual testing issues in terms of whether or not, uh, a cost as charged with a grant is in fact correct, and we also look for the reporting issues. There's three reports in there, all of those also had unmodified opinions with no findings and no question costs. The final report that we put together is called the Management Letter. This is really the thing we own, and what it's done, does, it's designed to hopefully share with you some things that we think could make the city internal control structure better, make the city's, uh, processes a little better, and in essence, is a little bit of a, it's a constructive document, but it's critical in nature to say, this is the things that we think you should do based on what we know as a firm, and based on what we know other communities do, using them as a basis. There's fifteen comments in there, um, some of them from last year, some of them new. What I've seen over the years is that these comments are getting shorter and shorter, because this was a significant document of Powers and Sullivan, first was hired by the city. Of the prior year comments, there were twelve, three were fully resolved. There are remaining, um, what would that be, nine left? Of those nine, I think there's significant progress being made for most of them. I've talked with Mark, and at length, about what's going on, and I'm very pleased with the approach he's taking. Frankly, some of these things have to be low priority, because there's a lot of other things that need to be done that I would consider to be higher priority, so they may last a little longer. But what I've, can share with you from our management letter perspective, is that this is a much better management letter than what was when we were here three, four, or five years ago. And the only new comment we had this year, related to, we were asked to go take a look at the operations of the parking garage, we had some recommendations, mostly accountability recommendations, and some, um, recommendations to improve internal controls over voids and parking validations, and using pre-numbered, um, receipts to just make sure that what should be collected is collected, and what is collected is accountable. More than happy to answer any questions, but that kind of sums up about four weeks of work, and about seven hundred hours of time relative to the audit. This stuff can be, I like this stuff a lot, I can appreciate the fact that it might be a little bit dry for you folks, so whatever you want me to answer, I'm more than happy to do so.
Counselors, at this point, are there any questions?
I do.
Councilor Maldonado?
You mentioned, I believe, if I heard you correctly, that, uh, the year two fifteen, we expended, we went beyond the allocated budget by almost two million dollars, did you mention that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Did you mention, did I hear you correctly, that you mentioned that, uh, the budget was overspent by almost two million dollars in the year two thousand and fifteen?
No, no, the, um, what I, what I was gonna suggest is when the budget, each, obviously you have to have a balanced budget, and when the first budget comes out, there's no free cash used, it's just what we're gonna spend versus the revenue is estimated. Then, later in the year, free cash gets certified, and you begin using free cash, and free cash is, it's a neutral effect, because as an appropriation is added, free cash is used to fund it. What I'm sharing with you, when I was saying that you anticipated to use six million dollars worth of free cash, you used, uh, three point three million dollars less than you thought, because of the excess revenues that collected, and because of the, um, the, the, uh, two point five million dollars, or two point seven million dollars of appropriations that you didn't spend. So you didn't have to use what you thought you were gonna use.
Okay.
And I, I've seen that historically in this place, at least for the last three to four years, that's a good thing.
In your audit, do you find that we spend too much out of the free cash, or that we spending reasonably what is common out of the free cash?
You're spending reasonably, and what I heard, in fact, for some of the votes tonight, free cash is kind of like a, it's a one-time money that you get, but I heard, I think the votes I heard tonight, and I've seen in the past, they're usually for one-time expenditures, maybe to fund the capital reserve, or fund a stabilization fund, they're not being built into the, the budget, what I would call structural budget, for an expenditure is gonna be there year after year after year. It's usually one-time money for one-time cost, and that's the way to use free cash.
Okay. Uh, you also mentioned that, uh, the, uh, the debt service, that the, a healthy percentage was about four point?
Four point six percent.
What would you consider dangerous?
If you're in the eight, nine, and ten percent range.
Okay, and we are way below that?
That's right. You don't want to go too below, because that, what, what that means is you're probably not paying enough attention to things that have to be, capital improvements that have to be bonded, but if you can maintain a level at four point six percent or five percent, I mean, you have a two hundred and eighty-two million dollar budget, give or take, um, that's a good number.
Okay. Uh, in your, in your report, you indicate on several locations, uh, no significant progress has been made towards resolving this?
That's the management letter, yes.
Uh, and, and that appears in, on several locations of your report.
It does.
Uh, what do you recommend to this council, uh, so that these matters be addressed on a prop, on a proper manner, on a timely basis, so that we can, so that we can meet those requirements?
The, I guess I would prioritize these, and when I was thinking about that earlier, the biggest one I would prioritize right now, based on what we had, was on page eight, called Segregation of Duties, and it was related to an internal control of the ability to add, delete, or modify the payroll files, and the vendor master files. Um, a second thing I would, I really would like to see is a fraud risk assessment. That is something that COSO, um, the organization, puts together all internal controls, has highly recommended, and is, is something that we recommend to all our clients, some who have been successful in doing so, many who have not, but what it does is it takes a look at all the different risk elements of the city, and mostly, it's usually collection of the monies, or possible fraudulent reporting, or reporting that isn't right, and assessing the internal controls, and then assessing whether they're good or not, or have to be improved. Those two would be the biggest things. Some of these other things, I think are, honestly, are not, will not be difficult to do. And, um, Mark, you can speak to yourself, but I, I know that there's, I know that there's things being done relative to most of these things that try to make that happen.
In your audit, have you been able to ascertain or determine, uh, the total amount of money that we have paid so far on, on legal suits against the city?
No, that's not something we really concentrate on.
That is not something that you have.
I mean, I, I know there have been some, and I know there's been settlements, but that is not, that tends not to be a focus of our audit.
Isn't that something that may determine how much in danger the city, uh, the city is in, if, if we are expending too much money paying lawsuits?
Um, that's an interesting question, because...
Uh, let me, I mean, let me give you an example, we just approved, uh, to be, uh, to go to a public hearing, the appropriation of five hundred thousand.
I saw that.
To pay for damages that we, we were sued. Uh, we lost about approximately two point eight million dollars on another lawsuit, uh, and, and it seems to me that this, these lawsuits, expenditures, and losses are accumulating, and to what point are these losses going to affect the city financially?
That's, that's an interesting question. First of all, any lawsuit that has to be paid is certainly taken away from money where it could go to better purposes. I guess my answer is gonna be a little generic, but if you just bear with me, what I've seen with the city is not unlike what I've seen for other cities of this size, in terms of settlements, because, um, you know, we have other communities who have very similar demographics, very similar, um, councils, and, and the, the operations are very similar, some of the sizes are a little larger. Things happen with the police, things happen with the fire department, things happen at D P W., things happen related to, um, um, I forget what they're called, M C A D. cases. Your costs, I would say, for cities of your size or larger, are not unusual, um, but it doesn't mean they don't hurt. That's the, that's the best answer I think I could give you. I'm not, in other words, I wouldn't say the city of Lawrence has an abnormally high, uh, expenditure for legal costs, when you compare it to a Springfield, or a Lowell, or one of the other communities like that that we do.
You just said, I'm wondering, I mean, why, uh, why would an audit not take that into account, because?
Well, it's...
It is something, it is something that is going to, on, on, on the long run, is going to affect the city financially.
Well, it affects the city financially, the city has to pay it, but our, our approach to the audit is not to try to determine whether a legal, legality is correct or not, because...
Oh, no, no, obviously not, I, I understand that.
So, so I guess the thing, I mean, what we do, what we do when we audit, we basically make sure that whatever the transaction is, it's correctly reported, and it's of a proper amount. So whether we're making a payroll expenditure, or a capital project expenditure, or in that case, a legal expenditure, it's our, it's our role to make sure that that's correctly stated, and if there is a pending legal expenditure that hasn't been made yet, whether or not we should be reporting that in the current year financial statements. That's really the emphasis that we have as it relates to the legal costs. For instance, we ask your, uh, council to provide us with a legal letter, tell us all the pending legal cases that are out there. We ask outside lawyers who are hired by the city to do the same. We accumulate that information and determine whether or not there is a significant probability that a case is gonna be adjudicated against the city. If so, we quantify that, and we report that on the city books. As far as making a judgment from the, from the city approaches to whether or not it's gonna be harmful to the city long-term, which is what we think about all the time, um, or it's just part of normal operations, we tend to be a little bit like Switzerland on that stuff, it's just, it's there, it happens.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Um, in your, uh, in your report, you also indicated that you are still concerned about the possibility that a control board may be assigned by the state. Why, why would you still have that concern?
Because the control board is still in place. We have to, we have to do that. When that, that legislation was made, it basically said that as long as the control board in place until it's released, there is a probability that the, a receiver could come in and take over the city. Now, obviously, I don't think we're even close to that, and has the, are we getting closer to having the control board?
Overseer.
Overseer. I mean, it's getting better, it's getting better, but the, the legislation has not been lifted, and as a result, as your auditor, we have to recognize the fact that somewhere out there, they haven't fully given the city of Lawrence the right to its own financial well-being just yet, they believe somebody still has to be here, and that fellow right now is Sean Cronin.
In your analysis of the, uh, of the things that the city has done?
Yes.
In order to meet the requirements of the act that, of the state that lent us the money, uh, you indicated that, that we have taken several good steps to try to correct our problems.
That's right.
Uh, do you find that we are taking enough steps in order to get out of, uh, the requirements of the overseer?
If you're asking my personal opinion?
Yes.
Yes.
We are, great, great. Okay, thank you, I don't have any more questions.
Counselors, are there any further questions? Seeing there's none, um...
Make a motion to withdraw this document.
Motion to withdraw has been made.
Second?
Properly second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, counselors, are there any, um... We have an old business counselor, uh, document one sixty-two sixteen, it's one seventy-three, one seventy-five, Haverhill Street, uh, it was posted as a safety concern, um, at the request of Counselor, um, Neil Calvares Rodriguez, who's not present today. Um, counselors, I just want to point out that, uh, on May thirteenth, at twelve fifty-two P M., we received a memo from our city attorney, Charles Body, uh, saying, and I quote, "The city council has no authority to declare any building unsafe, the authority rests with the city buildings commissioner, who along with the board of survey, will talk, will walk through the premises and determine whether an order for demolition is warranted." I requested to the city clerk that we place this item in all business, because there's a, uh, conflict within the housing committee, uh, due to the fact that we have two members that are unable to participate in the discussion, uh, due to conflict of interest, personal conflict of interest. I'm sorry. So as a result of that, business is unable to be conducted within that subcommittee, because they would never, uh, be able to have the participation required to have a quorum, and with the memo received from the city attorney, I will request that we get a motion to withdraw this document, since we are unable to take any action on it.
Council President, could, could we?
For the counsel certification, the item that we're discussing is 162, the rules require that six votes be cast in favor of taking out of committee.
Out of the committee.
And that seems to be a stalemate last couple of meetings. There are a couple of things I can do administratively. I can carry it forward to the next, to the next council session on the agenda, until there are sufficient people to address at the request of the council president, if he wishes.
Can, can somebody explain to, I'm sorry, that...
We probably have the same question. Go ahead.
Can somebody explain to me what is going on? I, I, I mean, I read in the newspaper about a conflict of interest matter regarding this particular building, and suddenly I'm hearing that the owners wants this building to be demolished by the city. What, what is going on?
Point of information and clarification here, the owners are not requesting the building to be demolished. There's a gentleman that approached the city council, I believe, the first week in May. He is married to the principal at the Oliver School, and he is the one that says that the building should be demolished. He is not the owner of the building.
And that petition came to the housing committee?
So, the way that it happened is that we had that person speak at public participation, and the night of that meeting, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez made a motion to add it as an emergency to our city council agenda, and the item was then referenced to the housing subcommittee. We have members of the subcommittee that have direct conflict, whether it is because of employment or participation in the building. So they are not able to participate in any form of discussion with this item. The petitioners are now requesting the building to be demolished. It's a resident that has asked the building to be demolished.
I was under the impression that the owners were the ones that were petitioning the city to demolish the building.
No.
Okay. I'm glad that that is being clarified. So where do we go from here, since this requires six votes, and we don't have, we, we have here, we have to wait for two other counselors? So my suggestion is that we table this document and that we have two other counselors.
We wouldn't be able to table it either.
It can't even be tabled. Sorry.
It cannot even be tabled?
We cannot table the document either, because we will have to pull it from the committee. And since we're unable to...
Okay, so we are not pulling, it's still in committee?
It's still in the committee.
Okay.
At this point, we really do not, we're engaging in a discussion, but we don't even have the ability to engage in a discussion.
At the committee level, there are, at the committee level, there are four members.
There's currently three, because there was one member that resigned.
Okay.
So I was filling in for the other person.
One member that resigned?
Yes.
Okay. So there are three members?
Correct.
Okay. And obviously, if two who have, who have a conflict of interest in this particular matter, if they abstain, there would be a vote of one, to send it up to the full council, without a recommendation.
You aren't unable to do that. Because you wouldn't have a actual quorum, even if the council...
And obviously, you as the president cannot, because they have a quorum...
They wouldn't, so what happens...
A solution, let me recommend, let me recommend a solution. We recommend that at least one of the three members goes out of the meeting, and because they need a quorum, that you as the president...
We've tried that.
Huh?
It wouldn't work.
Why not? Because then it would be two votes.
Because they, they have conflict of interest. One person...
But one of the, there are three members.
Yes.
Two of those members have a conflict of interest.
Yes.
Okay. If one of them goes out...
The other cannot...
And you come in, okay, and you come in, then there would be a quorum.
No. Because what happens is that that person...
Why wouldn't there be a quorum? Three.
Yeah, but I mean, there is two with conflict of interest.
I'm sorry?
That person has a conflict, the, the third person, the third member...
Yes, I understand, but the third person can abstain, and two can vote in favor of sending it up to the full council.
That person cannot engage in a discussion at any capacity.
No.
They cannot engage in any discussion. They cannot vote, they, nothing.
They can't even be present.
They're unable to take any action, either in favor, against it, abstaining.
So let the item remain there forever?
I would like, Council President, to you, please.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. During the discussion at the housing committee, we received a notice of violation from Peter Blanchet, which is the building's commissioner. We believe that with the information that he provided to us, including the information that the attorney provided to us, is enough information to make a decision.
Let me...
I, I would like just to extend an invitation to Peter Blanchet, the building commissioner.
Let me, let me add something. I know we, we have actually had some sort of discussion here, but we are actually not able to engage it in discussion. We don't have a document before us at this moment. The document is, it's part of the old business, but we have the document at the subcommittee. So at this moment, I would just...
All right, counsel.
We don't have a document.
We might as well leave it alone. Remain there for perpetuity.
We have no way to pull it, because we need six votes. We only have five members to conduct, to have a quorum and conduct business, but to pull it out of committee, we need six. We have five. So as a result of that...
Council President, I've been waiting to speak from the very beginning, if I could.
Let me...
I have, I have, I have a recommendation.
I'll allow, I'll allow you to have a question, but Mr. Clerk...
It's a recommendation, it's not to speak on the item.
Okay.
Could we send this to committee in the hall?
We could, but we, we cannot pull it from the committee either.
It's still in committee.
It's still in the committee.
Do a referral.
Yeah, do a referral and, and, and send it to committee in the hall. Where, where we would all be able to make a recommendation, send that to full council, and move on there.
May I make a recommendation?
I'd like to point out that the city attorney has instructed us that we have no jurisdiction of this item. So whether, the idea is to take it to the full council to withdraw, because we cannot take any action on the matter.
Council President, through you, please.
Speak.
Just a recommendation, very quick. Can we keep this item the way it is till the full, till the next meeting, to see if we can have six votes? Because obviously, there is two other counselors that are not here, and then we proceed with the discussion.
But I want to make sure that we all understand, no action, according to the city attorney, no action can be taken either one way or the other, because it is not within our power here. We are not, we don't have the power to take any action. So the recommendation by Counselor Rodriguez to keep it here until the next meeting, we have six members, we pull it out, we withdraw, no action.
No, and the way, the way we have it right now, as an old business...
To be pulled from the committee.
Yeah, but I mean, can we, can we leave it there till...
Yes.
We have the capability of doing that?
We can.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Counselor, Amonde, you have one last recommendation?
Can I, can I have this clarified for, for myself, please? Meaning that no action is going to be taken on this means that, what? There's no recommendation of demolition for the building?
We cannot make a recommendation.
So the city council will not be able to act on the demolition of 173, 175 Havel Street?
We cannot act one way or the other.
Will the commissioner...
No, but this is my next question.
Will the commissioner?
Well, yeah, will the, what, what's, what's the next, what is their next step?
The commissioner, the building commissioner is the one that makes the recommendation.
That's what we need to speak with. We don't know if it's going to be a demolition.
So, okay, so I have this question for you. I have had this property that burnt down on, in my district. I had two kids that went in there, reset fire to this. Half the building came down on one of my kids. I've been asking for that property to be demolished since when? And it's a hazard. I've had kids go in there, they've set it afire twice, and this is pleasant terrace that I'm talking about. Right now, and it's, I want to say like 30 feet on this side and 30 feet on this side of rats, infestation, and the whole, and the whole shebang as true. And this has been since I first became a city counselor, that this was, that this has, you know, been in place, so...
My recommendation would be, Counselor Amonde, to file a complaint with the building commissioner, specifically to that property, because as counselors, we are not able to make any decision in that regard.
Well, I tried going that route at that time, and I'm thinking that, you know, and this is, I don't see that building burnt down. I don't see that building in any way of shambles or anybody getting in there or anything like that. Now, the building that I'm talking about is in a area where there's a daycare on the right-hand side, there is daycare two doors down from there. We've got kids running in and out of this building. They set it ablaze, like I said a few times already. And it's been something, I've been the city council of that district for almost eight years, and about for that time, it's been in the system where I've been trying to get something done, and nothing's been done. So my thing is, like, how is this building going to get some type of recommendation for demolition, when I've had that other building up there that is, that is imminent and imminent danger of it falling on a child that goes in there?
Yeah. No, we wouldn't be able to make a recommendation, either to demolish or not demolish. It's out of our power. The only person that can do it is the building commissioner, so my recommendation to you in that particular property will be to...
To refile with the commissioner?
Yes.
Peter Blanchet.
Council President, I have a question.
Yes.
How can we, what's the proper way to invite the commissioner to be present next meeting?
For what purposes?
For these purposes.
We are...
Because, let me, let me, let me, let me tell you why. I actually, as a, as a housing committee member, and, and the chairman of the housing committee, I sent formal recommendations for him to be here today.
Formal request?
Huh?
A request?
For the, for, to discuss this, this matter.
Okay.
He's not here, obviously. Nobody's, I mean, a couple of people are here. I didn't get any, any, any response. So I would like to ask you to recommend any specific ways of having the commissioner here.
Okay. Right now, Mr. Clerk, we don't have a document before us.
No, in general, what's the process?
We will have to, we will have to, we will have to make a motion to invite any city department heads, and the letter will be forwarded via the city clerk or confidential secretary.
We sent a letter to him, and he didn't respond. Any problem with that?
I'm sorry?
That is, I would like to know if there is any problem in coming over here?
I do not have an answer for you.
If, if I may suggest, I mean, I think Council President touches upon, thank you, the idea that it's a nullity. If the document is void because it's a null, it's void, let me pursue it with the city attorney before we do anything else. I'll communicate to the councils if the city attorney says to me that this document is void, I'll void it.
Speak on it.
I'll just void it, and that's the end of it. And certainly, taking that, what you're saying, that the council cannot act in either direction. Maybe withdrawal was not the correct idea. So if he, if he suggests putting it back before the council to follow the rules and draw it out of committee, at some point, I figure all council members will be here, and maybe I'll just get lucky.
My, Mr. President, my concern, my, I understand about avoiding, since we cannot do anything with the document. I, I understand that, but my concern is that, that people out there may think that we are sweeping this under the rug, and, and I don't, I don't want that perception. But obviously, if we cannot discuss it, then it doesn't make sense to have the document there. But I would certainly be concerned about the actions of the commissioner, why suddenly his opinion is that the building should be demolished.
By the way, Council President, point of information, on that end, I mean, he sent a recommendation to the, to the housing committee.
That's what I'm saying, why...
He was there at the, at the housing committee.
But it is...
But we lost quorum at the moment that, that he mentioned a specific organization that one of the members got half a conflict of interest, and then we couldn't continue with the conversation.
I understand.
Now, what I'm asking is for him to come over in front of the full council and explain the sentence, and everything is going to be clarified.
Maybe the solution is to put a new document with the same subject matter that can be sent to the, to the council as a whole, so that we can understand what is going on. That way, he can come to the council as a whole, to the committee as a whole, and we can ask questions. Is, is that something reasonable?
I understand, my understanding is that we cannot place a document on the agenda that it is the same document related to the same matter within a year.
Within a year.
In order to do that, we will have to suspend...
If it is rejected.
Yeah, we will have to suspend the rules.
It's voided.
If it's voided, then...
Huh? If it is rejected?
Oh, we have, we have a, okay. Maybe we could pull it out of committee now.
You got something?
Yeah. Good evening, Counselor Abdu.
You all happy to see me?
We are very happy to see you.
So we can actually put it out of committee now?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that one, and I certainly would refer to the, I mean, if, if the council votes to pull it out of committee and withdraw it, I, I would suggest that any motion be made contingent upon the city attorney's approval of that action.
Okay.
I mean, we, we understand that the city attorney says that we don't have any power in making a decision, but at least we can understand.
Correct.
At least we can, we can get a, a good understanding, and we can have the ability for the commissioner here.
And we have the information from the building commissioner.
Exactly, to gather information.
Whatever the council, I'm just here to serve the council.
Counselor, since we have, I know, we have engaged in a discussion for about 10 to 15 minutes without being able, so since we have Counselor Abdu here, can I please get a motion to pull document 16216 out of the housing committee?
So move.
They're second.
The other two counselors left?
No, they are conflicted out. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 16216 is 173, 175 Havel Street. It was posted as a safety concern. On the agenda, it reads by myself, but it was by Counselor Niloca Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselors, can I please get a motion to withdraw this document pending the...
Approval by the city attorney.
Approval by the city attorney.
Wait a second, approval for what? To demolish the building?
No, to void it.
To withdraw the item.
To void it completely from, from...
Again, the Council President raises an interesting issue, although the city attorney has not suggested or stated that the document is void, he has suggested or stated that it is not within the jurisdiction of the city council to, to make decisions regarding the demolition of the building. My suspicion is that it's, it's still within the purview of the city council to withdraw its own document. That's my belief. However, I will confirm that with the city attorney, if that is the action that the council wishes to pursue, withdraw the document, subject to his approval of the withdrawal, suggesting that it, it is not a void item as opposed to a, a, a withdrawn item because it's misdirected, at that point.
Okay, then...
Mr. President, I, I understand that if we do not have the power to act on a document, then it shouldn't be there. But, but I, I think that we should wait, keep the document at this level, and ask the commission to come in, and ask the city attorney to come in, so we can understand exactly what happened.
If I could read to the council exactly what the city attorney said, I mean, I'd put it in the file for a reason, I guess I, I did. The city attorney writes back dated on March 13th at the inquiry of, I believe...
What's the...
I think it's your inquiry. The city council has no authority to declare the building unsafe.
Motion to go after him.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussions? Seeing there's none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Again, the city council has no authority to declare any building unsafe. So he doesn't say, you know, and that's what he says, he limits to that. That authority rests with the city's building commissioner, who along with the board of survey, will walk through the premises and determine whether an order for demolition is warranted. So I, I don't see or read into that, that the council cannot act on this item, it's just that I see that the council's limitation directly and specifically is that it cannot declare a building unsafe.
I understand that. I, that's very clear to me, but it seems to me that we need to, because the perception, okay, right now, discussion that I have heard, is that because the building belongs to a city councillor, okay, that the commissioner, in cahoon with the city councillor and maybe other people, and this is, this is the things that I'm hearing, okay, that is using her influence in order to get the building demolished without the council paying one single penny. So it's, I, I think it is important for us-
I'd like to clarify, the, the owners of the building are not requesting for the building to be-
No, no, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
Again, I understand that, but that is not the perception out there and the comments that I'm hearing.
Okay.
So it seems to me that in order to lay this thing to rest, before we remove the document, I think it is important, okay, that both the commission and the city attorney come to this council, and then we can remove the document, so that we can have a better understanding and, and clear the air, so that people out there understand, okay, that there is no favoritism being played with any, any members of this council. So my, so my suggestion is, let's keep it at this level, let's invite for the next meeting, the, and I would like to make that as a motion, let's invite the, the building commissioner-
Before you make a motion, I would like to discuss-
I'm sorry?
Before you make a motion, I would like to discuss a couple of things that we discussed at the housing level.
Well, I can make the motion, and it can be second for discussion, and then you can go, go ahead and, yeah, okay. So my motion is to invite the commissioner and the city attorney for our next meeting, so that we can ask whatever questions, and air whatever concerns, and put rumors to rest, and then, and then at that point, remove the document. So that's, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Discussion, Councilor Rodriguez?
No, I just wanted to, to the discussion, that on this property, 175 Havil Street, the apartment to conduct a construction in a partial demo was taken out. The building is a historical building, and, and the state, it's involved for the permit. The DEP departments provide the permit to the owners, and they are ready to perform business on that location, including partial demo, and including as they needed. I haven't seen the plans here, and we didn't discuss the plans, because that's not our point on the housing committee. But yes, we do, we did receive a recommend, not a recommendation, a notice from the building commissioner, Peter Blanchett, and he was present here, that committee, that day. It seems to me that the, the commissioner have all the proper information that can be provided to this committee, and he actually provided most of them, including the notice of violation that he provided to the, to the council. It happened to be that we couldn't send that recommendation to the full council, because we lost quorum at that level. But I personally think that they've been working on this matter, and a lot of people are involved to get this problem resolved, including the state. I don't see, I don't see them, all of the issues that people see, because, well, obviously, I'm having, I'm getting information that this council haven't get yet, but I hope that eventually we'll get it, and I'm very comfortable with the, with, with the statement that he put together back then, on April, back then, when he was here in front of the housing committee meeting. So if, if a motion, it's been done, and I would like to definitely move forward with it.
Councilor Rodriguez, would you mind reading the statement made by the-
Well, if he's going to be here, at this point, we're not making any decision, but I get rid of it, definitely.
Please read it for the record.
All right. It was sent to, it was, this is a notice of violation, on April 19, 2016, is in regard to 173, 175 Havil Street, Lawrence Mas, and the, the notice read as follows. It appeared upon an inspection made on, on the day 15 of April 2016 by the inspect, by the inspector of building for the city of Lawrence, that certain building located on 173, 175 Havil Street, Lawrence Mas, is in unsafe condition and dangerous to life. Limp by reason, the building is unsafe, the bill, the building is in unsafe condition and open to the, to the weather due to the roof, the roof collapse and a structural compromise. Massachusetts State Building Code 8, Edition, Chapter 1, Section 116. You are hereby noticed that you should be allowed until 12, until 12 noon of the following days, of the following, the service of notice on which to begin to remove the structural or make, make it safe or secure. And basically, and then, basically, they explain the fees and the fines that it's going to be encouraged to if they don't make it safe. We also received a permit that it was pulled by the owners of the property, and it seems like they've been working on this matter to, since then, to make it, to make it safe to, to the public.
Okay.
Can you, can you provide, make up those documents for the next, for the next meeting, so we can-
Councilor Armonte?
Thank you. I just have a, a quick question. When was this building bought? When was this building bought?
It was, this, this is not, it wasn't bought by the city or for the city or-
When was this building purchased?
It was a private sale, we don't know. This is not, so nothing related to the city.
I know it's nothing related to the city, but I want to know when it was purchased.
That's not, that's something that we're not providing to.
2015?
It was a private sale, we wouldn't have that information.
I'm asking when it was sold, because it usually takes a really long time for our city engineer or for the commissioner-
It's nothing related to the city.
For Peter, to come up with a conclusion or resolution or type of violation notice or anything like that. So it just, there's so many plans happening with it, within that whole circle, triangle, or whatever you want to call it there, Oak Street, Havil Street, with the new things that are happening there, with the whole implementation of, we might be needing a middle school, et cetera. Like, I don't want to put the carriage before the horse, but we already know where it's going. And that is the reason why we would like for him to be here, only because we have issues with it being a huge conflict of interest, a humongous conflict of interest. So when that does come up, I just, I, I really can't wait for this to happen, only because there have been other situations in the city that have needed this type of attention, and all of a sudden, this gets done like in, in a blink of an eye. You turn around, and all of a sudden, everything is signed, paper, deeded, permitted, and et cetera. So it, it, it is kind of, you know, take off your shades and put on your glasses, so that you could see what's going on, type of ordeal.
Yes, but point of information, Council President, the issue started on April 15, 2016. That's basically when the fire department went out to the property and find out that because of another issue, and then find out that the roof collapsed there, so it's about when, three months now.
For historical perspective, the issue did not come up because of the building itself. It came because the fire department was called to a, and abutted property.